Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is July 31st, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Hayden requested to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Carr?
Here.
Kostin?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinki?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present and one excused.
Thank you, item four is business, four A is citizens' input. Citizens' input is a maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name and address the council as a collective body and not as an individual. Anyone wishing to speak?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Joe Kilroy, District 3, 20-year resident. Just a couple of comments today. One on the waste contract and the extensions that might be considered. There's some emergent technology out there that has some real validity going forward. It's pretty new stuff, but it can actually, it's going to be a disruptor in the waste industry. And the time horizon could be within the next several years. It's being attempted at various places around the globe right now, and in the United States at one or two locations. And it gets into separation of waste and actually turning into products that can be sold in a very simplified manner. And I won't get into the issues with it right now, but it will be, it's not a disruptor to the collection process, but it is a disruptor to the burn process. And as we all know, the current county system is up for several of the burners have to be replaced during 31. So it's timely. My suggestion would be not to look at a 10-year extension on the waste contract, cap it at the three years, whatever, if there are the two options you're looking at from what I understand in reading your literature. The other general point I'd like to make, too, is that with the CIGL reviews from the standpoint of the fire and the police, I've always thought about what are the most valuable assets that any balance sheet has. And if you look at the city, I don't think we can argue that what we do well is fire, police, and our good employees at the city running those things. And I think that a good target would be to, instead of capping it at being into 75th percentile, I think we look over time at increasing that percentile to be much more competitive, takes a lot of the guessing out of the process and moving it upward and just get there over a period of time. Just some input, I think that if we want to have the most and keep the most prestigious forces in those areas, we need to pay that way. And I'm a budget hawk and everything else, but when it's the valued asset that you're looking at investing in, it's very much worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 4B, discussions. 4B1 is solid waste collection request for proposal, and I will turn that over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn this presentation over to our solid waste manager, Terry Schweitzer. Before us today will be a discussion on whether or not to go out for an RFP for a new solid waste collection provider, or look at the possibility of entering into negotiations to extend the existing contract. Both of those have two very different timelines, and if we should choose to do the negotiated extension and that not move forward, then we would be in a situation where we would be behind. And so it's appropriate to have the discussion now, even though it's several years in advance, only because of the extended timeline that we have on an RFP process. Thank you. Terry?
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. As Mike said, you know, this is one of those contracts that need a log and lead time just because of the nature of the business and what it takes to get it done. So what I'm going to talk about today, we're going to talk about the contract history in Cape Coral, state of the industry, just, you know, overview on procurement and things that are going on within the industry, procurement process for solid waste, contracting for solid waste, and then two options. As Mike had mentioned, you know, there's a possibility of extension, and there's also a possibility of another option is to go up for a RFP. So in the city of Cape Coral, as most of us know, the curbside collection was awarded the Waste Pro in 2010 through a RFP process. There was an initial five-year base period that expired in 2015, and then an automatic renewal in 2015 to 2020, another five year for 10 years. In 2020, a seven-year extension was granted to Waste Pro, known as Amendment 2. And currently, in FY '24, we're projecting a solid waste collection, this is not disposal, just collection, to be roughly 14.5 million for the residential collection. That's for 92,000 homes. There is in the current amendment, there is still a three-year mutual agreeable extension available that would run from October 1st through September 30th of 2030, and I'll talk about that in future slides. So what's the state of the industry? Since 2010, a lot of things have changed. There's become a lot more transparency with contractors picking this up. As we know, this is one of the vital services for municipality. We are required by law to provide it, and we have franchise agreements. So we need transparency with contractors. We currently have limited, but again, the industry has gone through a lot of changes since 2010. There have been many recent solicitations issued to port service levels. They've not agreed to do extensions with their contractors, or kind, you know, it's run out and they've agreed not to do any further extensions and go back out to bid. When it comes to mine, Port St. Lucie, we know a couple of years ago, they went out to bid for proposals within a 12-month period, and they ended up, the current rate at that time was roughly $34 a home. Inflation has increased costs across the country, as we all know. When you have a solid waste contract that is limited by CPI or an older CPI agreement that's run for a long period of time, that can get very restrictive on the contractor to be able to provide the labor costs, equipment costs, and things like that, cover those and still make money, because after all, they are in the business to make a profit. We've seen supply issues, again, increased lag time for equipment, you know, the city's experienced it, and contractors has as well. So the procurement process has changed to match these, and this is, again, why we're talking about this so far in advance. Typical procurement timelines, once awarded to a contractor or a proposer, is 18 to 24 months. The RFPs are a lot more robust, provides a lot of options, so they need time to review it, what's available for equipment, you know, and how they're going to, how they're actually going to submit their proposals. Again, procurements, again, are designed to meet both the municipality and the contractor needs, and more of like a public-private partnership, not a per se, but, you know, they are providing a vital service. There's variable cost escalators, as we know, fuel, oil parts, other consumables that can be extremely volatile depending on inflation. And also, another big cost is labor, local labor markets. Contractors, you know, require a lot of labor to run the trucks, run the office, fix the equipment, things like that, and they're competing for the same labor that all the other contractors, construction companies, and other businesses are doing. So it becomes extremely competitive, and we have to take that into consideration when we look at a RFP, if that's the way we're going to go. And then accountability clauses, typically, you know, liquidated damages, admin charges, penalty clauses, and/or incentive clauses, depending on how a contract's worked, how read, or, you know, worded. This slide talks a little bit about a Florida franchise rate comparison. These are municipalities that have franchises, maybe Waste Pro, maybe Waste Management, could be Republic, Coastal, there's a variety of them. But in 2023, the Florida, average across Florida was 23.05. Cape Coral, we're at 12.69 in 2023 for $10.36 below the average cost. And then you can see 2024 where we're actually at with the CPI, 23.29 for Florida. We're currently at 13.30 a home per month, and that rate's gone up to 10.63. If we project out, we're looking at, based on a 4% increase, the rest of, for 26.27, we're looking at being roughly around 14.83 a home, where the average franchise applying that same multiplier would be about 26.70, and the difference will grow to 11.86, again, making it increasingly difficult for a contractor to do work. So solid waste procurement. Obviously, we need to maintain statutory compliance and with our own procurement policies and documents. We need to make sure we provide a level playing field for all proposers if we go that route. And also, it's highly recommended, as most procurements, we provide a sample contract so that they fully know what is in store, and during the pre, we'll call it the pre-submital phase, they can ask questions and, you know, concerns about a contract and what the terminology actually means to make sure we have a really good solid contract when it's all said and done that the proposers could bid on. The length of period of time for binding proposals, I'm mostly referring to the base period. So there's a lot of base periods. As I mentioned earlier, it was initially a five-year period, and then there was another five-year extension. Some contracts that I was involved in as a contractor, the initial base period, there was no allowance for CPIs. So you would basically, whatever your rate was the first year, was, had to, he had to maintain that through the first five years of the contract. A lot of things can happen. So those are some things we want to look at. Should we do this, we go this route, is how do we, how do we address the CPI? Current agreement in the amendment, every year there were CPIs allowed. So when we look at a new RFP, is that, that's something we're more than likely going to want to look at, because what can happen later on, as we know, if they don't have the money to operate, then service starts to suffer, plain and simple. Carefully evaluate all the proposal factors and scoring. You know, what do we, what do we want to see? Where are we going to look at? The different options? How do we want to score? Cost, cost versus service, transparency versus, you know, types of technology that they might have on trucks, things like that, and then just really just evaluate, what do we want to, how do we want to weigh those when we do the final evaluation and award? Again, that, that kind of goes with having a rational, defensible evaluation methodology instead of just going off the top of our heads, like, oh, yeah, well, we like that, okay, we're going to go with it. Well, it may not be defensible, and it could, it could end up being challenged. So we need to really make sure we have a good, solid rationale for our valuation. Best value versus low price. Again, it goes back to, we don't always get what we pay for. So I know over, since I've been here, there's been a lot of concern over service. So do we want to value service more so than price? And I'll talk about that in a couple of other slides. But basically, some recent procurement, St. John's County, they weighed the cost at 24% of the overall evaluation score, 24 out of 100, where Polk County, they did 13%. So they, they focused more on the service than they did on cost, where St. John's County looked more at cost, a little bit, you know, double the, the look at it, cost versus service. Some trends to consider, as I talked about, inflation and cost adjustments, how do we want to handle that? So is the inflation, it may or may, we don't know what the future's going to hold, but, you know, we have a pretty good idea. But then what do we allow the contractor to propose on, on cost adjustments throughout? Annual, annual CPI? You know, if things get sideways, where the CPI is 3%, but locally, things jumped up to 10%, do we want to have flexibility to give them that option to adjust prices? Again, labor challenges, how, how will we address those? Because again, contractors have to man the trucks to get the garbage picked up. Fuel is another variable cost, as we've seen, right? Depending on what happens in the future, as far as electric vehicles go, alternative fuel costs, CNG costs are, are starting to be lower now as compared to diesel, and some recent contracts that were awarded, Polk County is being one example, the trucks went from diesel to CNG to help lower their fuel costs, and again, help lower their price. So as we put forth this bid, you know, some, or a proposal, do we look at some of the options on that, you know, alternative costs for, or alternative fuel and how that affects pricing? Enhanced technology, GPS for transparency for breadcrumbs. Where have the trucks ran? Did they actually go down the street? Do, you know, if we get a call for missed route, we can, we can look at it internally and see that, you know, the truck didn't go down the street, or yes, the truck did go down the street, things like that. RFID tags on carts to know where the carts are. So as an example, we have, the city, as, as we know, once Waste Pro delivers a cart, they become city property. We have 92,000 homes that have two carts. When you start doing the math, we have about $10 to $11 million of inventory out on the streets right now that we really should be keeping track of with some sort of RFID technology so that we know where our assets are, so that when people move or leave the area, they don't take the cart, and then another cart's asked to be delivered. So there's some things that we can work around with that, or work through with that. And the other thing is, how do we want to look at customer service as far as calls go? If, if, if we decided that the city wanted to take on all the calls and then allow the contractor to have access to our customer service system, then we have to look at how, how do we marry that up? Or vice, some recent contracts, the customer service system went fully on the responsibility of the contractor, but the municipality had full transparency to be able to look at their system and be able to, you know, see what was going on as far as calls go. Because right now, we have a very limited, what we see is a ver, is a percentage of what the overall calls come in to Waste Pro. We only get the, the end results, as some of you have experienced with some follow-up calls, why something hasn't been done. So how we handle that going forward would be very, very important. And then equipment costs. Price of steel, price of everything goes up, regulations that are put on the trucking industry, that increases costs for the trucks, the technology that we want to, you know, what do we want to have on the, on the trucks to help provide oversight? Some of the contractors now are automatically just putting GPS on their trucks, camera systems to help monitor their workforce and also help monitor their service on the street. We don't have access to it currently, but that's something that we, we would have to look at. And again, that would add costs to any future ca, any RFPs. So for us, we want to make sure it's clear, right? Contract needs to be clear, comprehensive, cover all our bases, but also be reasonable so that the contractor has the flexibility to talk with us and work through some of the gray areas that may pop up. We obviously want to protect our city interests, provide for relief events and clarity of non-relief events, such as force majeure for hurricanes, how do we handle those? If there's some other kind of, an event or something that may happen, to be able to talk about that. Again, appropriate length of contract, base period versus extensions, how many, how long? Index pricing, what index do we want to use? There's multiple out there. I know that its standard has pretty much been a CPI, just all, all consumer, although some municipalities are going to, more towards the trash and sewer index, because that's more, more related to the, obviously, of what the work is done, and that, and that trend has differed from the CPI, both plus and minus. And then anticipate any changes. As an example, a gentleman mentioned earlier about the waste energy plant, I have been in discussions with Doug Whitehead, they don't foresee any major changes that are going to affect us. However, let's think about this, if, if the contractor, right now, with an interlocal agreement, we take all our solid waste to, to the waste energy plant over in Fort Myers, should something happen and all our waste had to be diverted, now we're making a longer haul, they may say we have to go out to Lee Hendry. That adds a lot of travel time to a contract, so we need to be able to address those issues in a contract with the hauler. If, if the disposal, disposal travel time changes, then, you know, they need to be able to adj, we, we need to give them the room to be able to adjust and talk about through that. And then a performance-based contract, I think that goes without saying, how well they perform is, is the money. That's, that's their incentive, right? Incentive-based contracts, basically, they have a set dollar figure, that's what the revenue is, their incentive is to get the trucks off the street to save time, be more efficient, and reduce the amount of, we'll call them penalties, admin charges, liquidated damages, or what have you, to maximize their bottom line. That, that's really their incentive. I've been doing this 25 years. I don't know of any place, and I've done some research, talked to consultants, I've not found a place where they have a solid waste contract that, I'll just use this as an example, the, the base rate is, they're paying, we're getting charged 13.30 a home right now per month. If they do a great job, they get $14 a home. I, I don't know of anywhere where that is, or how that would be managed without full transparency. So those are some of the things that we need to look at. Again, things that'll affect price and our requirements, collection frequency, you know, one time a week for trash, bulk, horticulture and recycling right now, some things that, you know, and again, in a proposal, in a RFP, what would it look like if we went to every other week recycling, as an example? You know, how would that look? You know, every other week bulk, if we went to, if we, I'll just caution with a bulk collection or horticulture, if we change the frequency and make it less often, then we need to provide alternative disposal options for residents, because communities that do that will see, we will see an increase in illegal dumping and other issues. So we have a really great service right now on the frequency, and it's just in my, my opinion, the only thing, in professional opinion, the only thing that might, we might be able to flex on that is, is recycling, potentially look at every other week, that could help, you know, control costs. Cart delivery and repair, there's options to that. Do we still want the contractor to ha, to handle it? Or do, would that be something that, you know, we put out a separate RFP as an example for a third-party company, that, that's all they do, and they would manage the cart program separate from the contractor? And then we would have more, either way, we could look at it, figure out how do we want to handle that? What's the most cost-effective way to make sure our inventory is properly handled and managed? Again, accountability, I talked about that earlier, administrative charges, liquidated damages, full transparency, again, I had talked about that, GPS 311 or contractor customer service system, managing cart inventory, the well-defined force majeure, you know, what are the, what is the base term, extensions, things of that nature, CPI, price escalator terms, and then qualifications will be a big thing, right? I mean, everybody's, when we look at this, I say everybody, I mean, the entire industry, if we put this out on the streets for proposal, everybody's going to be looking at it, because it's, we're talking in, in 2027, when you start looking at 106,000 homes, we're, we're talking at a, in a 10-year, if it was, you know, we looked at a 10-year period, we're talking upwards of, you know, a $250 million contract over 10 years. There's that kind of a potential out there. So it's a, it's a high dollar, there'll be a lot of interest. And then we also, local office, we don't, you know, as we know, it's not cost-indusive for somebody in Port Charlotte to be coming down and servicing our contract. We need them local in Lee County, potentially in Cape Coral, so that they're more responsive to our needs if there's issues, and they're closer and they have less travel time for their drivers. And then again, I've talked about cost versus best value. Looking at, at, at the industry trend, best value is, is the way the industry's going as far as making sure we get what our citizens need. So, moving on to the last couple of slides, last four slides. So my, two options at this point, looking at it. We talked about extending the current contract for additional three years. It would have to be mutually agreed, agreed to, and it is in the current amendment, too. Prior notice would need to be given by either party, 18 months to 12 months prior to September 30th of 2027. 18 months is April 1st, 2026, 12 months would be October 1st, 2026, the official notification. That's not a lot of time if one party or the other says, we're not going to extend. We don't want to extend. Now, now we're in a situation where we could potentially have 18 to 12 months, put out a fully robust RFP, have people bid on it, and the potential for somebody new to win it, and then they got to ramp up in 12 months. Typically, that'll involve, they, they would have to lease equipment, because in 2028, the amount of equipment to pick up Cape Coral for 100,000 homes is, is going to be approaching, you know, 25% more of what, what's currently being used. So that's, that's going to take time to get in place, so they're going to lease, and that's going to add more front, front-end costs for proposers. And it's also puts a crunch time on, on us getting things together. If we do an extension, the service level remains the same or very similar, I would defer that question to city attorneys or procurement as far as what our ability to change service levels are. Some states and municipalities have more flexibility, but if it's, if it's materially changed, then, you know, we have the possibility of being challenged extending it again past the legal, I'll say not legal, but contractual language that's, that's in there for the amendment. And then the other part is, if we do extend to three years, we're going to have a 20-year con, a 20-year service with the same provider with very few changes over that timeframe. So the second, the second option is to issue a new solicitation. We know, we know, costs are going to go up. It's just a fact, based on what we've seen, where the industry's going, the procurements that have happened around the state, as I'd mentioned earlier. But with a new solicitation, we also have the ability to improve service, and then that also would give us a contract for 10 more years and give us all the ability to focus on other city needs and not worry about getting the trash picked up. So this slide just briefly summarizes procurement timeline for option one, which would be the 18-month extension. So basically, step one, take probably a month, depending on when, you know, when we wanted to, to do it. It's just review the terms and conditions, look at our cost structure, evaluate the service levels, and then, you know, consult with stakeholders, you know, various departments such as code or street, you know, possibly citizens' groups, if we wanted to see what, what we want to look at, the council, you know, internal management. We look at that, then we move into defining what our actual objectives are, prioritize our needs, figure out what our pain points are, set our budget constraints, and then consider what are, what actually are our long-term goals with solid waste, and then talk to Waste Pro about entering into the agreement, or entering into an extension, and then just award them the work, and then they could start to work October of 2027. That process could take up, and I say this, it could take up to 18 months, it could be a couple of months, just depends on when we, when we start. So this is what the timeline would look a little, a little bit like. Right now, July, we're in, in the discussion at the COW, we review and analyze the current contract, develop our priority list, and then discuss with Waste Pro. If we wanted to do the 18-month notification, that would be in April of 26. But again, you know, that would have to be official, and then they would have to let us know officially within, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever, do they want to extend it? And then the new work would start October 27. If we went with option two for an RFP, the recommendation is to have a If we went with option two for an RFP, the recommendation is to have a consultant help us draft an RFP and have that third party separation, especially when we start getting the evaluation process. We would have workshops again, hold them with a consultant, talk with internal departments such as procurement, legal, code, solid waste, and define what the scope of services would look like and then define an evaluation criteria that could take from two to six months. And I'll explain that when I get to the timeline. Then we would release the RFP, we would hold a pre-proposal conference to talk about it, have proposers ask questions, issue any addenda and then receive the proposals, take one to three months, again, depending on when that goes out. Then we would review them internally with a consultant and ourselves for the technical financial review. If we needed to hold any interviews separate with the proposers as we do, enter the whoever we awarded to, and then enter the contract negotiations to firm up the contract, again, two to three month period, and then transition and implement up to 18 months with a new hauler, if it's a new hauler or Waste Pro, if we, you know, whatever the changes are in the contract, give them the adjustment period to work through it. I want to, if anybody noticed on the slide, I want to, I want to just point out one thing. If you go to where collection contract awarded and proposals due, those, those dates are backwards. The proposals would have to be due before we awarded a contract, so bear that in mind as we review through this. I noticed it on the slide the other day when I, I looked at it before it was finalized. But again, we're July, we're in, we're in the COW talking about it. To really make sure we have enough time to do this right, we would need to publish a consulting RFP, you know, in the fall, sometimes September to November timeframe. And then award, award the consulting RFP sometime in, you know, the spring. We're going to be, and the reason I look at spring, we've got the holiday period coming up, so when you start looking at traditionally in the business, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, there's three weeks that are pretty much, not a lot of work's going to get done. People are going on vacation, consultants are starting to wrap up some of their projects, so that gives us a couple extra months to work through some issues. Then award the, publish it, award the RFP in August of 2025, next year for the collection. Hold a pre-proposal conference about a month after that to give proposers a time to look at it. Again, then the proposals would be due sometime in February, April timeframe of 26, then award the contract a few months later. And then the new work would start in October of 27 and again, given that wrap up time of anywhere from 18 to 12 to 18 months, depending on when the contract's awarded. So that long winded presentation, I thank you for your time and open any questions.
Thank you Terry for the information and presentation. Before I open it up to council, I guess the million dollar question that I didn't see answered in your presentation is have we had any discussion with Waste Pro? Are they interested to at least have a discussion to extend their contract? Because if the answer is no, then that kind of answers our question here.
Yeah, yeah. They have been interested in talking about it.
Okay. All right. All right, with that being said, I'll open up for discussion, Councilmember Steinecke.
Thank you, and thank you Terry, it wasn't long winded, it was exactly right winded, all the information that, at least that I think I need.
Thank you.
With a couple of questions, the, the extension, the three year extension that's possible, are there any rate guidelines within that extension or does that get back to the mutually agreeable part where we would be determining what those rates would be for those three years?
So there is, it is binding based on the amendment, whatever the CPI is and as we know, that's an automatic CPI now, so whatever it would be in, you know, it was time to extend in 2027.
And so, I mean, when I, when I look at the numbers, we kind of find ourselves in a pretty enviable position right now. I'd like us to keep that in mind. One of the issues that we had during Hurricane Ian recovery were some definitions and, you know, some specificity in the contract. Is there any opportunity to clean any of that up for the, for that three year period where we wouldn't find ourselves in that type of a position again?
Well, that's a good, good question and we have cleaned that up since, that has been cleaned up.
Okay.
So it's defined, we have a process in place how to address it, so.
That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I noticed an option two that would be requiring a consulting firm. Do you happen to know any rough costs on what that would, that would, that would be if we were to go that route?
It depends on the, you know, how robust we're going to line a contract. I can tell you roughly, council member, back when I was doing some solid waste consulting, and I'm talking almost 10 years ago now, it was between 50 to 75,000 depending on how much it was involved and, you know, what we wanted to do for us. But I'm sure it's gone up since then, but I, we'd have to put it out to see what, what the actual costs would be.
Okay. And then there's, is there any advantage to, you know, pursuing option one but also option two at the same time? Is there, would that be, you know, in essence, shooting ourselves in the foot if we go out for option two and then Waste Pro says, no, we don't want to continue for another three years because you've gotten all this back or is there an advantage to doing both?
Well, certainly it'd be an advantage, I mean, we could, we could get a good idea and we could, I guess, say for lack of better term, we could have the documents in place, right? We could have the RFP pre-drafted and everything and then if Waste Pro decides on the mutual agreed part, hey, look, it's enviable for us, for the city, but it's not that enviable for us Waste Pro, we don't want to extend. Now we could pull the trigger, it'd be quick. We could probably, I would, I'm again, a rough guessing, if we had everything in place, all we had to do is, is publish it, you know, a few months to get the proposals back and we'd be under 18 month window, but we could probably look at maybe giving a contractor, proposers 15 months, once, or a contractor 15 months to, 12 to 15 months to get ready. Just depends, but yes, that, that could be an option.
All right, thank you.
Next.
Yeah, I guess for me, some of the things, no matter if we do an extension or put it out for an RFP, I think the CPI approach that we're kind of doing now that we didn't do before is probably a benefit for both parties. Number one, to keep the service where it needs to be for our residents, but also put a mechanism in place where, you know, our provider isn't losing money. If you could put the chart back up, it showed a variety of other counties and cities.
Absolutely.
You know, we're one of the, I know one of the lowest rates that we have, but I would think that we would be naive to think that our rates are going to be similar to where they are today for that three year extension. We know that's not the case, I know we get the reports from Waste Pro, we see what it's costing them, we see what we're paying them. And surely they're not going to continue the rates near where they are today. That wouldn't be a good business move for them for sure.
I, Mayor, just, I do have it on my laptop here, but for some reason it's not popping up on the screen.
All right.
There it is, okay, thank you.
You know, so when you look at those rates, I mean, we're pretty fortunate what we're, what we're paying now. But no matter if we go out for an RFP or the contract extension negotiations or discussions, we know it's going to be, you know, much more. I think that one of the benefit, we have Waste Pro here, they're already doing the job. So it's not like we're going to bring in another hauler, they're going to need 100 trucks, you know, they're going to need 150 people, you know, that we all know, getting vehicles, just look at our fire trucks, taking 30 months or more to get our fire trucks. So that, that's going to be difficult. One thing that I want to make sure that we do if we do the extension is one thing that, and I know we've done a better job through the last few years, I think our contract with Waste Pro initially could have been better defined. And I think that's on both sides, not just our side. So the expectation is well defined and try to make sure we have a mechanism in place if there is an issue or, you know, if there's a hurricane, what the expectation is. So no matter if we have the extension or if we go out for an additional quote, that we just make sure that we take a look at that contract and make sure that it's crystal clear for, for both sides. I kind of like the GPS thing that you had mentioned, I think that's a benefit for, again, for both sides. You know, someone calls and says, hey, Waste Pro didn't come down my street. Well, we know that sometimes they didn't put the can out in a timely manner, the truck had already went down the street. We'll be able to, you know, see that right by the information, the GPS information. As far as calls for service, as far as the community, I think should solely go through our 311 system and then we pass out along to the vendor. Again, no matter if it's in a contract, extension or a new solicitation for bid, that way we know exactly what's going on. And I think that's important. You go through the 311 center, it's documented, we have a record and then we also have checks and balances in place to make sure that there has been a remedy to that complaint. So I think that would be important. You know, I think that you look back, I know I've been here six years now, Councilmember Cosden has been here longer than I, we've had some peaks and valleys with Waste Pro. I will say that I think the last year I've seen a substantial improvement than what we've had in the past. And I think a lot of it is because we've had better communication, I think the city has had better checks and balances. I know we have inspectors out in the field, making sure that they're fulfilling their obligation as a contractor. I think that's important, we have to make sure that we continue to do that. And we have that open dialogue and we have a well defined process if there is an issue. And I think the reason that we are better today than say three years ago is because we've outlined a better, well defined contract and process. So I think that's the keys to success, no matter if it's this vendor or a vendor for the future. So for me, I'm more interested and will have an emphasis on those items, the contracts and how it's written. You know, the GPS, the calls for service, set the level of expectation. I know one of the things that we've talked about as a council is some type of a transfer or at least a bulk, a bulk facility where our residents can go drop it off. And we're doing that now, you know, that, that pilot program that's extended over the next few years, I think we're ready for the next step. That's something else that I think is important for our community to have a facility like that, a regular facility, not a fenced compound and you drop it off and they pick it up. So I think we need to look at that as well. So, you know, I think, you know, it's going to come down to cost. I want to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our value. As we all know, there's some industry standards that you've outlined here with other counties, so I guess we have a good understanding of what those rates are now and knowing that we will have an increase. But I think we could benefit with Waste Pro only because we may not see as much as an increase than if you bring in another vendor, because they have to set up shop, they got to get the equipment, they got to get the manpower, Waste Pro is always already here. So we may see a benefit where actually we may see a, we'll know we'll see an increase, but maybe not as much of an increase is because they already have boots on the ground. So I think it really depends on how the negotiations go. And I think we need to set a timeline on those negotiations because like you said, this is going to be a long process. You know, I don't know what that timeline is, but if the city says, you know, we're going to open up negotiations now, if we don't make a decision by December or November, whatever the case is, we need to set a defined date. And if we haven't negotiated something by then, I think then we have to, that triggers the go to the other option. And so I don't want to see negotiations drag out for eight months a year and then we're behind the eight ball. So that's kind of where I stand.
I'm definitely with you on that, Mayor. I don't, it would put a lot of crunch time.
Yeah. Councilmember Law?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Terry, wonderful presentation. I think the very least, it kind of signals for better or worse, you know, the knowledge that you've got of the contract and sort of the lessons learned that you've implemented and some of the suggestions that you've made to the mayor's point with regards to what we need in future contracts regardless of whether that's with a different provider or the current one. And so to kind of piggyback on that, to again, the mayor's point with regards to this slide and the information that we have, certainly Waste Pro has this information as well. And so I think regardless of whether we go back to the negotiating table and existing with them or whether we go to an RFP, I think for their purposes, there's some redundancies built in and either, either way, I think it looks the same on their end. We may get a couple dollar difference, we're talking about the variables here, from them in an effort to maybe pressure us to go exclusively with them and a rewrite, and those are just business decisions that we'll have to make. But I think regarding, you know, the relationship that we've had and there's been some, some peaks and valleys as was said, and then the relationship that the, the public has with this particular provider, I think we owe it to them to certainly go out to an RFP in my perspective, just to see what it looks like. Because again, I believe that at the end of the day, whether we go straight to them or renegotiate or not, their numbers are going to be very similar. And so if that's the case, why don't we see what everyone else's is as well? Considering again, that if we did go back, it would be, the contract would be a total rewrite or a rehaul anyways. And just a general business principle, I think, is that in competition, you know, as to the benefit of the consumer in most instances. So I'd love to see that, especially considering, like you said, the potential value of the contract to these prospective vendors and hopefully the interest that that would generate. I certainly would, would think that that would be the best route to go. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Steinecke?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Terry, I just wanted to clarify based on the mayor's comments, and it goes back to my question in regard to rates if we do a three year extension. And the, and the answer was is that it would be controlled by the 4% CPI that's currently in the, in the contract. Is that not true or are they able to renegotiate a rate for those three years?
Well, the language states it would have to be at the CPI at that time. As far as can they or not, I would have to defer to the city attorney office or I could get back to the council on it. I don't, I don't have an answer right now whether we could go past the three years. Like we could go the three years because that's in there if Waste Pro agreed to it. Now, as far as any major changes or things like that, I, I don't have an answer right now, but if I could, I can research that and get back to the council on it.
Yeah, it's not so much that it would go beyond the three years, it's that during those three years, we're talking about 28, 29 and 30. In, in those three years, the rates, if it were just extending the contract as it exists, there wouldn't be a renegotiation for those three years, it would be based on the current contract or no?
I'll verify that and certainly provide that information to all of you.
Okay. Because I think it's important that we take a look at, the legend if you will, that when you take a look at the most recent contracts awarded, Martin County, Flagler, Palm Coast and St. John's County, we can see where, where those rates are today. So to some degree, you don't really necessarily need an RFP to see where the rates are. And we haven't seen fuel prices go down or labor costs go down. And so when we take a look at over that period in time, we've got a general indication of where that is. And so if, if, if we can renew that contract for three years based on where we see those rates are, then we need to go to school with that. And then, and then the last, if you take a look at Port St. Lucie is an example of if you rely upon an emergency bid, if we wait until the last minute to make a decision one way or another, you end up paying almost the most of anyone. So certainly would want to make a decision, but I, based on what we see, and if an extension is possible, and kind of one of the statements was, is that, you know, they would have no reason to continue for that three-year extension at the current rates. Well, if they were to lose in the RFP process, they got to decide where they're putting all that equipment, and all the personnel, and whatnot. So there can be a reason for them to stay in the contract for that, for that three-year extension, that we don't want to sell ourselves short there. And as it relates to technology and GPS, I did have the opportunity, as we were trying to find solutions in the Hurricane Ian recovery, to meet with the government representative, government services representative. And I found out at that time that it may not be GPS technology that they have, but they actually have timestamped cameras on their vehicles, so that they can go back to any one of those vehicles and pull the camera, and it actually tracks where they are, you know, via camera, and what time they were there. So that certainly helps as well. So there's kind of more than one way to skin a cat there, and Waste Pro already has that particular technology on their trucks. That's it. Thanks.
If I could, I see Mr. Jones is in the audience. I've got a question for you, if you don't mind coming up. And I guess it kind of goes back to what Councilmember Steinecke said.
Good morning. Bill Jones, Division Vice President for Waste Pro. Thanks for inviting me up, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. First off, you know, I'd like to hear, you know, your views on the contract extension, and what your opinion is on that. And also, the, maybe the question that Councilmember Steinecke had kind of alluded to was the, you know, the CPI as far as the contract extension versus having a complete negotiation of the rates. What's your thought on that?
Sure. So first of all, Terry and Mike and I have had discussions over time about our interest in extending, and we're certainly interested in extending for the three-year period or beyond that, depending on, you know, how it all works out. You know, we've been partners with the city for many, many years, and I think we've had a great partnership. A few peaks and valleys, as you mentioned, a lot of those built around COVID and hurricanes and things like that. But day-to-day, managing the growth well, I think we have great service and a great relationship with staff. Beyond that, in terms of the actual extension itself and negotiating that, we would certainly want to talk about the rates. The rates, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, are rather low. The CPI has not kept up with the costs in this kind of new world economy we're dealing with these days, particularly locally. You know, cost of, same challenges y'all have, right? Cost of housing, keeping employees going, things like that. So we would want to look at those rates and have some discussion about them. I couldn't tell you what that would look like right now, but we would definitely want to have a discussion about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no other lights on, I guess what, I guess what we need to do is maybe, Mr. City Managers, kind of go down the, go down the list here with council members and see what the two options are. And I really believe there's maybe a third that we could entertain as well. Are we going to set a deadline for, I think that's important, the deadline? If we want to go down, or have the opportunity to negotiate a contract extension, I think we need to make sure we have a, the staff have an idea of a deadline, so we don't find ourselves kind of behind the eight ball?
Yeah, definitely, we'd want a deadline. I don't want to make it to where it's 18 months out from the start of a new agreement. I mean, I think if we started talking this month or next month, I would think by the end of the year, we should be able to figure something out, where they want to go, you know, December 31st, maybe, of 2024? Where they want to go, where we want to go, and see if it's something that we can work out. And if not, at that point, we know. I built in, as you saw in the timeline, I built in some flexibility for the RFP process if we go that way. So I'd say December 31st.
Okay. Councilmember Carr?
Just one quick question. On the Florida franchise rate comparison chart that you have, are the service levels comparable? I mean, are we looking at apples-and-apples comparison with the numbers here with service levels?
There is some, some of them have, you know, twice a week still, the ones that are a little bit higher, but for the most part, everybody's gone to once-a-week service. So there is a little bit of flexibility in there.
Are they all cart service providers?
Yes, they all have cart service, just because of the nature of the heat and the bugs and vermin in Florida. Typically, let me clarify, cart service would be the solid waste in the recycling.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Law?
Sorry, sorry about that. City Manager reminded me, Port St. Lucie, they had twice a week, and they went to once a week, and they're solid waste, but their rates still went up. But that, again, that was an emergency-type situation, which typically drives the cost up. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
The emergency-type, sorry, I guess, the emergency situation that you're referring to, what would that have been?
Service. There was an issue with service, they couldn't come to an agreement.
During the litigation?
What's that?
With the litigation that they were involved in, or?
It was a litigation, and my understanding was the contractor decided they did not want to provide service anymore, and went to litigation, and they were awarded the ability to get out of the contract.
So they were in a pretty difficult position? They were in a pretty difficult position, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes. Port St. Lucie was an extremely, yes.
Can you remind us who that contractor is?
Waste Pro.
Okay. And that contractor also was involved in a filed litigation against the city as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I believe in excess of two or maybe three times, I believe, over the last several years.
Two that I'm aware of.
Correct. So with regards to proceeding forward, again, give them the same opportunity, I think that we've had some progress over the last year, but just to provide some additional context for me in regards to why I think that it's incumbent that we move forward with, looking at all the potential options, even if you just say, hey, even if we came forward and these guys are already here, and they're mobilized, and let's give them an opportunity to match the market rate, and since they're matching the market rate, let's stay with them. I think there's still some growth that needs to happen from a service-level perspective in relation specifically to me, in my district. I think if you look, and I know Councilmember Carr, I think last time we had a presentation that was presented to us as far as 3-1-1 call volume and the categories of those calls, you'd see pretty quickly, in my district, I think, two to one to the second place was Waste Pro, as far as the predominant issues. And so that, as that area continues to grow, I think that's the largest area for growth. I would hate to see us remain stagnant with regards to the service levels that we provide, just because we're looking at numbers on paper with regards to this chart. Because again, some of those, some of these numbers, yeah, they're once a week, some of these I would imagine are twice a week. So certainly not apples-to-apples, and I know that you almost couldn't present, it would be a several-hour presentation if you went deep into the details. But I do want to make sure that we're aware that there are significant variables as we make that decision. One last point, and I think the mayor touched on it, is that if this body decides that they do want to at least pursue the renegotiation exclusively, that we make sure that we're not in a position where, you know, they kind of flirt with us for several months, and now we're in a position where we say, oh crap, we're in a position where we can't move forward, and now from a timeline perspective, we also can't pursue the RFP. I'd hate for that to happen. So thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so maybe we'll start with Councilmember Cosden. You know, we have options one and two, and, you know, any comments that you may have.
I forget which is one and which is two, but the RFP.
Could you put those up, please?
Absolutely. Let me see, probably be best to... So option one, sorry, option one is the extend, and option two would go out for a new solicitation, simplify it.
Option two.
I'm in favor of option one, with the thought that we would find out really quickly where we were. And that's why I asked the question around whether the extension would include the extension of the CPI adjustments as a rate determiner. If all we're going to do is negotiate with Waste Pro the same way we negotiate with anyone else, then we put it out for RFP. So if that's what, a meeting with them very quickly to find out what their extension terms would have to be for them to be mutually agreeable, I think that's where we make the, for me, that's where I make the decision if we go out to RFP. But I want to know, what is your mutually agreeable point to extend for the three years? Then I would decide whether I'd go out for a new solicitation.
All right. I think, I think, don't correct me if I'm, or correct me if I'm wrong, but I think isn't that option three, kind of the option-three thing to talk to Waste Pro, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think I brought that up, that maybe we have that discussion first, and then come back, but.
Okay.
Councilmember Cosden, I see your light on.
I would like option three.
And you're?
I guess I just defined option three, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm for option one. I like it that it's three years. I think we're going to see some changes in technology in the next couple of years, and I think we're going to see energy decline in cost. So I don't want to be locked in anything long-term.
You know, when you look at the options, I think there are some benefits to it, and there's not some benefits. I think that the, you do a three-year extension, takes us to 2030. When you think about that, then we're going to have to negotiate with an RFP. So we know those costs are even going to be higher then. So if we negotiate the RFP in 2027, say, for a seven-year contract, we may actually save money over that seven years, versus doing a three-year extension and then going out for an RFP. So I think that's something that we have to weigh in, that it could actually cost us more money in that timeframe, if we did that type of approach. I personally believe that whatever the number is from Waste Pro for the three years, is probably going to be less than what the industry may come back at, only because it's, they're here, they're managing, but it's only for that three-year period, and then we're going to have to readdress it again. I personally believe that it would be more cost-effective to do the RFP process for a longer period of time, like a seven-year contract, because I think that will be cheaper for us in the long run. That still gives Waste Pro the opportunity to submit that RFP, and it's to their benefit because they're going to go from a three-year contract to a seven or a 10, or however, I think when I had talked to the city manager on my one-on-ones, thinking about a 10-year contract if we go out for an RFP. You know, so I think that 10 years, we may save money by going out to an RFP, because that's a 10-year contract instead of a three, and then starting over, starting over from there. I think it also gives us the opportunity to look at our contract, gives us an opportunity to revise our contract, gives us an opportunity to talk about the bulk facility. I think there's a multitude of things that we can take a look at, where we actually provide a better service to the community, and over a period of a 10-year time, period, it may be cheaper that way. So I would say I would probably go with option two for those reasons.
Option two?
I'm option three.
Option three.
All right, so we had, what do we have here? We got the?
Four threes.
Four? Four for option three? Okay, three for two? Okay. Get the direction you're looking for?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right.
You wanted to find that?
Yeah, I want to just make sure that we have a deadline on option three. You know, I don't want to waste time.
December 31st?
12:31, but I will also get with you all next, you know, as we, as we move into those meetings and try to see where they're at, I would like to get an idea from each of you of the service-level clamps that you're looking to see if there's a way to try and see if we can get any of those as well.
Yeah, if it can be sooner, I'm, you know, I'm willing to work on it sooner, too.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. All right, we'll move on to 4B2, which is car wash of storage moratoriums. Mr. City Manager?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. City Council, for the record, Anthony Santor, Senior Planner, Key Core Development Services. Here today to talk about the car wash and self-storage moratoriums. And so briefly, I'll just give you an recap of the presentation on how we're going to break this down, because it is a lot of information to cover. So first, we're going to start with a recap of the moratorium ordinances and the reasoning behind them. Then we're going to go into our research recap and then break down our methodology a little bit, how we investigated and came to some of our conclusions. We're going to then look at the specific use analysis and summaries of both car washes and self-storage facilities to get a better understanding of the use itself, and how it would work and play into our current system. And then we're going to look at the municipality research and summaries. So we looked at differing municipalities and how they dealt with similar issues. Excuse me. And then we're going to go into possible regulations and our reasoning behind those regulations, and we have those split out into two separate sections, one for the car wash facilities and one for the self-storage facilities. So we're just going to start with the recap briefly of ordinance 1524 and ordinance 1624. Those are the moratoriums for self-storage facilities and car wash facilities, respectively. So there was growing concern over the proliferation of the uses, and that concern could result in the loss of potential commercial property, condensed proximity of uses, the proximity to and the impact on residential uses in districts, imbalance in economic diversity in the community, and limited economic and locational impact for long-term growth. All of these led to the preponderance to examine whether or not certain issues needed to be addressed, these concerns, whether or not they were properly addressed in our current code, and if they weren't, how we could address them. So both ordinances passed a public hearing before council on 4/17, and they expire on 1/17/2025. So the strategy behind them was that the current code was designated to be unable to adequately address the concerns regarding the rapid proliferation of the uses we are seeing throughout the city. The provided time is granting the city to adequately study the issue and then determine the appropriate course of action for the betterment of the community and for the long-time viability of the city, and that the study may lead to proposing necessary code revisions to properly address the concerns and to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So for the preliminary research, staff has begun the process of research into the viability of the code and its ability to respond to concerns presented by council. We conducted the research in the following ways. We had a three-step process. One was analysis of the existing code and the ability to address those concerns. The analysis of the existing code was done through the moratorium process, and we have very little actual code that speaks specifically to these issues within our current code. And then we also looked at the researches of uses, the typical site construction requirements, researches of other municipalities, citing similar or different concerns. So what, what did those municipalities examine? Were their concerns similar to ours? Did they bring up other concerns, and how did they address those? So as stated, part one of the research was conducted during the moratorium process. I will briefly touch, when we get into the individual sections, on current code structure that we have for each of those uses. So we'll begin with part two, which is our specific use research. So staff researched and reviewed multiple materials in the process of identifying key factors which contributed to the implementation of the use. Those materials included trade publications, design and construction publications and specifications, and academic journals and studies. This was focused on both general information as well as specific information, which would be coupled to identifying concerns. So what we did was we examined as much information as we possibly could to get a better understanding of the use, what drives the use in specific locations, what developers are looking for in site selection, construction requirements, and how those impact the site selection process and the neighboring communities. So just to give you a summary of the key factors we found, they were very similar in both circumstances, being both commercial uses, and they are very similar to what we see for other commercial uses throughout the city. So one is lot size proportionality and accrument. You know, what we typically see with the uses is they want to be... You know, what we typically see with the uses is they want to be proportionally square, rectangular, or within certain proportions that allow maximum use of the site. They're under obtainable for single ownership and usually between one and three acres, depending on the program that they want to implement. Visibility, location, and access. They should be located at locations that are easily accessible from major roadways that have high visibility to passing traffic. The locations should be centralized to optimize both aspects, such as corners and along main arterials. And then neighborhood density and community composition. Surrounding neighborhoods should have adequate constructed density to support the proposed use within a three-to-five-mile radius, and community composition should be slightly diverse, assuring steady activity. So what we're seeing in this is that the key assets that drive a lot of commercial development are the same things that these uses look for. And what that leads to is a conflicting race, so to speak, of the use trying to get in where other commercial uses would also be seeking the same type of land. So the desired site selection factors for the research uses, they align, like I stated, closely with others that utilize the same zoning district, creating a highly competitive market for the limited amount of land we have in the city. The relatively low startup costs and overhead for this facilities provide a competitive age over retail restaurant and many service-related uses, other uses that could be determined to have a much more high impact on the community as assets. And the nature of the research allowed for greater flexibility than other commercial uses do not have. And then once established, the uses are hard to repurpose or redevelop. So going into part three, and if you have any questions at any time, you can feel free to stop me and we can go over them. We broke down the municipality research into the two uses, car wash study and self-storage facility studies. And what we did was we tried to investigate primarily Florida-based municipalities, understanding that we are in Florida and that the regulations that pertain to us also pertain to those municipalities from a state level. However, we also did determine that, you know, other municipalities in other districts outside of the state are dealing with similar issues, and they've addressed them in similar differing ways, and how was that done? Because obviously, this is a nationwide issue that has been coming up. So for the car wash, what we analyzed was Green Acres, Hialeah, Orange Park, Vero Beach, North Ridgeville, Brook Park, and Fort Worth. And for the self-storage facilities, we had Miami, Miami Dade, Dade City, Winter Springs, Pompano Beach, Providence, and Bloomington. So just to give you kind of an initial summary of what we've seen, all the municipalities that we studied had similar concerns to the city in regards to the rapid proliferation of the uses. They employed various strategies dependent on their own studies and community development compositions, and we saw them range from responses from extremely limiting to just minor corrections in their code, but all made some form of modifications. So nobody put the ordinance forward and then just decided to not do anything with it and just allow the existing code to come back into effect. So just to give you a more in-depth summary, and the first part A is what we see is congruent between both uses. So what we've seen is that in both cases, the municipality in almost every circumstance made the use a conditional use, and that was where it was permitted. Some of them did just blanket reject the use entirely, saying you're not allowed to be within our bounds or within certain districts that we were permitting you. But in cases that it was still permitted, they made it a conditional use, giving it a further layer of review scrutiny. They typically prohibited or buffered them when adjacent to residential districts, either through orientations, additional landscaping buffers, hard buffers. But whenever it was next to a residential district or within close proximity to a district, residential district, they did make modifications to buffer that use from the residential district. They also made locational requirements, only permitting them on specific roadways or within special districts. For instance, there are some municipalities that would only permit them on a particular roadway or would only permit them on arterial roadways within the city. And then there were some that would only permit them within a special district that they created or had created already within their zoning plans. And then there were also locational requirements maintaining minimum distances between similar uses. So we saw it range anywhere from a thousand feet up to a mile, two miles, depending on the municipality. So if we go into a little bit more specific implementation, what we found for car wash facilities is that some of the municipalities actually limited them based on the per capita allotments. So they would say that one car wash facility could only be allowed per every 20,000 residents. What we also found is that they required them to be completely enclosed in a building, and then again, shielded away from residential districts with that building. So the orientation could not be anywhere towards a residential district or residential home. It had to be in such a way that all the uses were shielded completely, even with the inclusion of additional buffering, they were still required to be screened and removed away from being oriented towards residential. And then we also saw that in some instances, they limited the hours of operation to account for those additional impacts on residential neighborhoods. For self-storage facilities, what we found is that a few municipalities, they included integrated mixed use on ground floor or through attached liners. This is a way to generate more commercial development on properties that the structure was taking up in limited commercial lands. They also put minimum site area requirements and limitations on unit size. So we saw maximum size limits of anywhere from 80 square feet to 120 to 400 square feet, depending on the municipality, for unit sizes. We also saw some limit the maximum amount of size of the acreage for the property to be in the vicinity of one to two and a half acres. We also saw limits on our minimum requirements of lot size, anywhere from one and a half to four acres, for accounting for differing amounts of buffering and site implementation elements, which would help reduce the footprint on adjacent uses. And then what we also saw most universally for self-storage facilities was that there was some type of enhanced or additional architectural requirements that the municipality required to elevate the building aesthetically for the surrounding neighborhood in the community. So now I'll stop there and see if anybody has any questions before we get into the regulations. I know that was a lot and quickly covered. If you did have specific questions about the individual municipalities, I could address those. Just trying to give you a high level, since there is a lot of information to go through.
Any questions at this point? We're good.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the possible regulations for car wash facilities, and these are just regulations, options that we have looked at and which could be possibilities for implementation. There could be permutations of these, and these obviously don't represent every option that is available. There could be crossings of these options, but these are some that we had found. So for car wash facilities, one, adequately define what a car wash facility is. Now, our current LDC does not define or differentiate car wash uses. The general definition applies. There are different interpretations when we look at them, which are open for consideration. The typical definition that we've had is an area or structure equipped with facilities for washing of automobiles. The ordinance identified, the moratorium ordinance identifies both standalone facilities and accessory facilities ancillary to vehicle fueling stations as the largest concern, but other situations could also be considered if so deemed appropriate by council. And then providing a definition in our code will just help to solidify the use determination and enhance our target regulations, not leaving it as open-ended, but actually providing some type of definition for what we wanna see these ordinances apply to. So then what falls under the definition of a car wash facility that we're talking about today? Those are standalone facilities that we're talking about, with or without automated washing equipment. So any of the facilities that have the automated equipment where you pull in, it pulls you through the washing tunnel and then dries it, and then you exit. However, we're also considering the mandatory, the manual car wash facilities in which you pull in, pay some money, wash the vehicle yourself, and then drive away. Both of those are being considered when we talk about car wash facilities. And then any of those that are full-service, self-service, and any accessories to primary uses. So such as car wash, gas station, car washes at gas stations, those are an accessory to a primary use. There could be other instances, such as car washes at like auto ownership places. However, I don't necessarily know if those would be relevant to the discussion, because that is a smaller accessory use in a much larger primary use. And so the impact may not be felt as much in the community, but that is something that when we're looking at the definition and defining, we could massage that to say, hey, exactly what are we determining as the appropriateness of the code reach? And then integrated facilities that are attached entirely or partially to vehicle fueling station. So those are, again, gas station or other type of, let's say, a convenience store which has a gas station attached to it or something like that, that's not necessarily a vehicle fueling station or some other primary use that has a now accessory gas station. That's just trying to cover some of the bases for additional primary uses we may see. So with that, one of the first options that, you know, we could kind of consider would be to prohibit car wash facilities as a permitted use, either conditionally or by right throughout all zoning districts within the city. This is kind of the most restrictive option. This would definitely limit the proliferation of the uses by prohibiting them from being constructed. The new existing uses, the existing uses would be able to operate. However, they would not be able to be expanded or placed upon destruction. The drawback with this issue is that it may not be able to adequately address economic diversity for a balanced community. So the use itself is part of a diverse and balanced economy within the city. It has a place where people, obviously, people like to utilize them, hence their proliferation. It just may not be in the best interest to remove them completely, as they do serve a function within the economy of the city. Possible option two would be to limitations of the total allotment of the cities based on the per capita amount, and then couple those with locational specifications. So this option would definitely limit the rapid proliferation of the use throughout the city, capping it at a specific amount. So under the current number of proposed facilities in the Cape Coral, what we would see is one per 7,617 persons. And then a limitation of a car wash facility for every 10,000 persons would allow for 38 car wash facilities based on the IGM build-out numbers, so that would be 10 additional car washes. And then examples that we have, you know, Gator Circle, a build-out would require two car wash facilities, or there would be the opportunity for two car wash facilities to be built within that area. And then locational specifications, instances like separational distances, non-corner placement requirements. All of this would ensure the adequate spread of the uses throughout the city while ensuring that we retain prime commercial land for future development. So for instance, we could put a requirement for a separation distance between facilities of a thousand feet or a mile. And we could also specify that no facility could be within 500 feet of a corner, of the intersection of two arterials or an arterial and major collector. And those would just help to ensure that locations that are prime commercial land that are undeveloped or are available for redevelopment are not targeted for one of these uses, but maintained for a use which is more high impact to the community. And then the drawback with this item is that, or with this possible option, is that the concerns which were expressed within the moratoriums themselves may not be adequately addressed through the limit, just the limitation in locational specifications of the use. So then possible option three would be to permit the use as a conditional use with specific regulations around locational and design standards. This option had removed the per capita requirement, but installed the conditional use requirements in specific locations for design and standards. This would provide control over the proliferation of the use and provide for adequate spacing, similar to what we saw in option two. It would also allow specific standards that could be crafted to specifically address concerns that would safeguard community economic diversity and ensure viability of future economic development. And it would, it would allow for the ability of developments to have a little bit more freedom in terms of how many are necessary within the, within the city. The drawback of this is that the proposed regulations, as it is a conditional use, and that we are looking to craft, excuse me, more intensive design standards would require substantial overhaul of the land development code specifically in our conditional use sections. So what could possible regulations under this option look like? One, that we are specifying that standalone car wash facilities are conditional use, permitted in our two current commercial and commercial corridor districts, that the facilities are only permitted on major collectors or arterial roadways. The uses are required to have a minimum separation of one mile. The property shall be set back from the intersection of any major roadway by 500 feet. When abutting in a residential district, increased landscape buffer zones are required, along with additional screening. And that the operation of the uses shall be faced or oriented away from residential zoning districts. And if located adjacent to a residential zoning district, the hours of operation shall be limited. And then all of the facilities shall be within an enclosed building, and any outdoor storage and display is prohibited and enclosed within that building. So with that, our, our recommendation is to look at option three, which is uses permitted as a conditional use with specific regulations around locational and design standards. And so with that, I kind of will stop there so that I can open it up for questions, which I'm sure there are some questions and some discussion and direction from council.
Okay, councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you, just a couple of questions, and thank you for doing all the research that you did. When the per capita numbers were dealt with, if you would, and certainly comparables were identified in that process, I'm sure, was there, was there, did you go so far as to take a look at what the mix of single-family dwellings versus multifamily dwellings was with the thought that much of the need for the car washes is for those people that don't have the facilities to wash the car at their, at their residence? Due to availability or the regulations of where they live and so on and so forth, so they, they need somewhere other than their home to wash it. Was there any look at that as you looked at those cities to take a look at the mix, like our mix?
So that's a very good question. The per capita allotment for the municipalities that had enacted it, when they specified their breakdown, they did not go in-depth as to the mix that they had. Now, these are similar to us in primarily single-family communities. However, we did not go that far in-depth, and ultimately, through the discussions that we, we watched and read when we examined it, the per capita allotment was more of a limiting factor, and the determination from it was based specifically on how many existed within their current, their current city bounds and how many they felt actually were necessary. So for an instance, one municipality had decided that they had five car wash facilities within their bounds, within their city limits, and determined that only six were necessary. So when they drafted their per capita allotments, they reflected that based off of their current population. So to answer your question, we didn't go that in-depth in looking at them. We did examine, we did examine the municipalities themselves to see if we were, you know, obviously, we didn't wanna look at a New York or some other type of very large urban city, which obviously doesn't mesh with our fabric that we have here in the city. So we did try to select municipalities that were close to us, but we didn't get into the exact number breakdown of saying, oh, they have a 85 to 15% ratio of mixes. We didn't go that far in-depth.
Okay, thanks. And, and last, the the car wash and fuel station or car wash and convenience store combination, if you will. I know that in, in the, and of course, councilmember Long knows this better than I do, but in the whole alcohol licensing, there's a determination of, hey, what percentage of what you do is food? And what percentage of what you do is alcohol? Is there, is there any like determining factor that when there is that combination there, is like where the mix of the business is? And the reason why I ask the question is you wouldn't wanna necessarily have a loophole that was there that you, you put one gas pump out there so that you can have, you know, the big car wash. Not that it would be cheap to put one fuel tank out there, but at the end of the day, is that, is that, are there regulations around that, that there has to be a certain mix of business for it to be a combo?
I don't believe we have specific requirements that specify, you know, 60% of the lot is utilized for this. It comes down to a case-by-case basis when you examine it, and you can very easily determine what the primary use is based off of what is obviously being developed on the property. what the primary use is based off of what is obviously being developed on the property. So in that case, if we were to take your example and look at somebody who submitted a plan for a gas station that only had one pump, had a 200 square foot convenience area and then had a full service automated car wash, we would look at that and say, well, obviously the primary use of that lot is not for a gas station. It is for the service of washing vehicles. You have a accessory of providing services for gas and convenience and then we would make that determination accordingly. Now, what we could do is possibly look to codify something like that. However, it gets tricky when you're dealing with a 51% versus 49%. Or if you were looking at a specific breakdown of property of, you know, how would you determine, you know, 60% of the area is being used for X or 49% of it is being used for Y? Especially if you have a mixed use development, either vertically or horizontally, where it is much harder when you have blended activity areas that are covering multiple uses, how do you determine which portion of that use goes to what? So it is something we can definitely look at and it may be something that's beneficial to the code, but I don't know if we want to codify specific percentage allotments. I think it's, it's kind of like a you know it when you see it issue and I think that's currently how we deal with it and it may be best to continue, but.
So if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably duck. So is that the type of thing that would be inside of option three as far as, you know, conditional use and we would be looking at those types of things?
Correct. And, and our current code specifies that accessory uses must be designed to meet a primary use or treated as a primary. So when we were looking at it, when we saw an accessory use, we would say, all right, it falls under the same requirements of a primary use and would be subject to those requirements.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. I do like option three permitted as a conditional use. I think it gives us the most flexibility with regard to ensuring that the location utilized is buffered properly and it is set up in a, in a way that's, you know, beneficial to the community. I don't like any limitations only for the sake of, you know, they can deteriorate over time, new, new technology can come into place, you know, better product can be, can come into the city to replace what already, you know, to compete and eliminate what else is there. I mean, if we limit the number, then we're limiting competition. And I, I mean, there's some of these, you know, if you don't like the, the car wash and you have no other options because nobody else can come in, that's not necessarily the market that I'd like to see in our city. But I do think that they should be permitted as a conditional use. You know, when you talked about buffering for residential, we didn't specifically get into other, I mean, that's the other thing, I think. We can't really write a code that's going to contemplate every scenario. Perfect example is the one that's gone in on Santa Barbara at the, the dead end of a Gulf Access Canal. You know, they met the requirements under the code as it was written, but that would have been a perfect example of a conditional use option where that specific location could have been looked at differently with other buffering options that would have been maybe more appropriate for that location as an example. I'm sure there are others around the city that could come up, but for me personally, I think the option three is the way to go. It gives us the most flexibility on restrictions associated with each individual site to be developed while leaving options open for the development by the property owner. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think option three is the best one of those presented for me for a lot of the similar reasons as was stated for, by Councilman Carr. I think the conditional use, like he said, that's one of my favorite lines in my line of work is, is that the, that the, the code didn't contemplate for this particular use. And so that gives us an opportunity to take a crack at it on an individual basis and look at the unique geographic situations of a particular site and then to be able to, you know, in light of the fact that we're applying them to the principles that are set forth in, in the ordinance, whether, whether it fits or it doesn't. And so that's great. My only concern unless it was maybe designed that way is that if you, you continue to set forth these principles in a particular way with regards to separations and setbacks and, and residential proximity, I mean, we don't have a lot of commercial depth. So if we're talking about having to be situated in a certain distance back, it, it, not only does it limit the potential sites that they're able to do, but then it also almost eliminates the, almost any potential possibility of them going in, a number of sites and the other ones were limited to the conditional use application itself. But again, when you're creating legislation, there's no way that you're going to be able to contemplate every single possible scenario and we could sit up here all day and try and still fail. So, so given that understanding, I think this is, is our best foot forward with regards to trying to get a hold on this. So thank you for the work that you put into it.
Yeah, just one quick question from me. When you look at the chart on page 17, it says that all washing facilities and equipment shall be within an enclosed building. My concern with that statement is, as we all know, and I probably would guess that just about everybody up here on council is probably utilizes a car wash. After you get done running through the car wash, you go vacuum it out. That particular piece of equipment is not enclosed in a building. So is that what you're proposing?
So there were municipalities that did address that by utilizing that as an exception to that requirement. I would be proposing, and this is just, you know, could be a possible regulation, there obviously could be some massaging when we looked at it, that it would still be enclosed to help limit noise. But obviously depending on council's direction on it, it could be an exception to the equipment that is housed within an enclosed structure. So it could, we could continue to see what we have with the open air vacuum systems. We could also go the route of making it more restrictive to help reduce that noise or increasing the amount of possible landscaping that is around there buffering to help drown out some of that noise, just as an additional buffer between those residential districts when it occurs. So it could be either way. When we had examined it, we had looked at a more restrictive route, but obviously it can be massaged more.
Yeah, because for me, I wouldn't want to say that the equipment for vacuuming the car has to be in a building, but I do think there needs to be some buffering. And one particular side, and that's why I agree with option three, is it's more site specific. As we know, as the scenario that council member Carr gave, being right on the water, we know sound travels on water much further. So you may have to have additional buffering on that particular side in comparison to maybe some of the other sides. So I think, you know, taking a look at it, the site specific, I think, is important. I agree with that. But I wouldn't want to see us mandate that the vacuuming equipment needs to be in a building.
Yeah, I just want to, so while we're talking about the, the equipment, the vacuum itself, so when you, when you come out of the building, they have like a standalone vacuum system with an overhead pipe, the noise that's generated from.
Talking about a blower that drives the car off?
No, no, the vacuum system itself.
Okay.
So that vacuum is typically outside of the building and it has like an overhead pipe system with a bunch of hoses.
Okay.
When they designed that building, they can move that vacuum that generates the noise inside the building and still have the, the hose that comes out. So it's more the equipment, not, not the, not all the appurtenances.
Right. So, you know, it looks like we have a little bit of work there because it says all washing facilities and equipment. To me, equipment's that vacuum cleaner I'm grabbing a hold of to vacuum my car out. It's a piece of equipment. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's a common sense approach, you know, when we're looking at this. I do personally agree with having some type of minimum separation throughout the city. That's why we're here. That's, you know, that's why we're having this discussion because they're popping it up all over the place and you can have one within a quarter mile of one another right now. So I do support some type of a separation requirement, whether it's in lane miles or feet, if it's per capita, because, you know, if you think about the needs of the community, you'll probably need more in a higher density populated area, say in the southwest or south of Pine Island Road compared to north of Pine Island Road because there's not as much population. So some type of, of restriction as far as the separation, I, I would support as well. You know, one of the things I've always said is I think our commercial zoning is a little too broad. I think one thing that we need to do, and I've said this time and time again, this isn't only with car washes and storage facilities, but a, a variety of other businesses that come to the city. You know, look at dollar stores. I mean, we got dollar stores, you know, within a quarter mile of one another. So that's just another example. But if we ever looked at our commercial zoning, very similar to where I've come from, where I worked, you had a, you had C1, C2, C3, and you could have a variety of usage in each one of them. And the reason that you do that is to have pretty much what we've, we're trying to achieve here. You have some separation where you can and can't put certain businesses. So I think that's what you call smart growth in the city. So I know that's not the discussion today, but that's something else that I, I think we need to do as a city to look at our broad commercial classification and, and see if we can't design a, a plan for, for smart growth in the city. But as far as the car washes, I'll support the option three that you've listed that staff recommend.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I tend to agree with every council member up here said. I'm not going to repeat what I liked that Rich said and what Keith said. I'm, I'm with option three as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of things. One, with, just with regard to the things like dollar stores and all the other things and having C1, C2, C3, we're almost getting to the point where it would look like an LDC rewrite than it would just coming in and trying to fix each, each issue with a Band-Aid. So it, it may be something more comprehensive than this when we consider those things. And obviously that's a, a different project than what we're talking about today. But for today's purposes, I do, I am in favor for all the same reasons everyone else with option three and would agree with separation requirements and, and looking at per capita reasons for, for why certain amounts of separation would be required in one area versus another. I would, and, and the other, on top of the vacuuming issue, I know some of the facilities have detailing available where after the car comes through, then, then the car gets vacuumed by someone else, gets detailed inside and out by someone else, and there would have to be some identification whether that had to be done inside a facility or whether that could be done outside of an enclosed facility for sure. And then the last is, it's great to have the flexibility, but I think we also, for the potential of, you know, future litigious situations, that we can't have it too broad that we can be accused of favoring one over another and bring ourselves to a point where our city attorney needs to hire more staff to handle discrimination issues, if you will. So, so I, I appreciate the flexibility, but we don't want it so flexible that we can be accused of favoritism one way or the other.
Okay, looks like the, council member Long.
Just, just real briefly, I forgot to elaborate on, on the discussion with regards to accessory and ancillary. You know, I, I think you're in a minute. You know when you see it, but that also leads to some issues because to that point, you can kind of pick and choose which ones you want to pick on. Seen it done a, a ton of different ways. You certainly don't want to go the way of, of, you know, to that example alcohol where you're auditing books and things like that. Although I've seen it, it's ridiculous for a municipality to do that. But I've seen something as simple as providing definitions of accessory or ancillary in the code and what that means, which is the definition, of course, is less than 50%. I've also seen municipalities require like a written notarized affidavit stating basically that it is going to be a lesser portion of their business model. That seems to be pretty simple to, to provide, provides to some sort of mechanism if we did want to move forward in that regard. But yeah, I don't know that that's going to, it'd be a huge issue. I think, I don't know that we've talked about it here as far as whether we want to include that as a exception, but just to kind of help make that decision, I guess, as moving forward, as you could do a couple of those things. There's, there's a number of ways to do that and I don't know whether you even need to write that in the code, but internally having those mechanisms might be helpful. Thank you.
I don't think we've heard from council member Cosden or Shepherd. We hear from.
I'll go ahead.
Option three?
Option three, yeah. I didn't want to repeat what's already been said, but yes, option three.
Okay.
Three.
Got the direction, Mr. City Manager.
I did. And again, just like the other one, I'll follow up with you on some nuances that we have before us in writing that to make sure we get more closely what you all are looking for before we actually present that for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into that next topic of discussion under this item, which is the storage facilities.
Sure. So moving on, we're going to do a similar exercise for the self-storage facilities. So currently, our LDC does define in Article 11 what a self-storage facility is. It is a building used for the storage of personal property where individual owners control individual storage spaces. And we do want to make a distinction that the vehicle and boat storage is a separated use. So when we talk about self-storage facilities, we are not talking about strictly vehicle and boat storage uses. There could be an instance where those two uses are combined, but our code does differentiate them out and both of them have their own specific allotments and locations that they are allowed within the LDC. And I just want to give a quick highlight for our specific regulations that exist in our code in section 51016. It is a P* or permitted with special regulations and that the facility must be designed to screen interior development. The current landscape area of 10 feet must be provided around the perimeter. They cannot be within 1,000 feet of each other and that's as measured from the point of, the nearest point of the facility to the nearest point of the adjacent facility. They are permitted in the, in the CC district, the commercial corridor, the prohibit, the site is prohibited, the facility, excuse me, is prohibited on sites with frontage that is 170 feet or greater along Pine Island Road. And within the commercial district, it is prohibited within 400 feet of Burnt Store Road. So that is currently the only regulations that we have in regards to self-storage facilities. So as we examine possible regulations, again, this is very similar to what we were looking at with the car wash facilities, we're going to start with the most restrictive and that is the removal of the self-storage facility as a permitted use either conditionally or by right throughout all zoning districts with the exception of the industrial district. So this would definitely limit the proliferation. They would not be able to put the, a new facility anywhere within the city, excuse me, unless it was in the industrial district. It would also allow existing uses to continue to operate, but again, they would not be able to be expanded or rebuilt upon demolition. And then this option would result in some possible increased vehicular traffic and proportion, disproportional economic diversity. So we're, we have very limited industrial land within the city as well. And if we were looking to only expand the use within those districts, you know, those districts tend to be way away from residential districts, so the amount of vehicular travel needed to get to them would definitely increase. And with taking up the additional industrial land, we may free up some commercial land, but then we're reducing the amount of industrial land that could be utilized for other highest and best uses within it. So possible regulation number two would be to limit the total number of facilities similar to what we saw with the car wash facilities based on the per capita amount. Couple that with the conditional use review and then limit it with specific design and locational specifications. So this would again, limit the rapid proliferation that we see within the city and cap the total amount at a set number. It would also provide district-specific designs that could be specified so that any development not in industrial districts would meet certain requirements, both aesthetically or functionally. And then locational specifications ensure adequate, adequate spread of the uses throughout the city. With this option, similar to other ones, the additional concerns that council had in the moratorium may not be properly addressed. So what would possible regulations under this option look like? Again, these are just possibilities that they would be permitted as in conditional uses and only permitted in three specific districts, industrial, commercial and commercial corridor. The self-storage facilities throughout the entire city are limited to one per 20,000 residents. The uses shall have a minimum separation distance of one mile. The properties shall be set back from major intersections by 500 feet, again freeing up that intersection space for more highest and best uses or more economically impactful uses. Where they are provided in other, any district other than industrial zoning districts, the use must be completely enclosed within a building. So if you wanted to develop a self-storage facility in an industrial district, you may do a spread out individual unit, open air storage facility. However, if you were designing one for a commercial or commercial corridor property, you must do an enclosed facility. Within that, facilities in districts other than industrial facility, other than industrial districts shall have following design aesthetics required, such as minimum of 30, 30% transparent glazing on each facade which faces a public. glazing on each facade which faces a public right-of-way or a residential zoning district, increased landscape buffering and screening along public roadways in abutting residential districts, and then loading and unloading in parking fields oriented away from residential districts. Again, just being cognizant of the neighborhood impact that these facilities could have if situated adjacent to residential districts. Moving to a third possible option where the use is permitted as conditional use, there are specific regulations for both location and design. However, we are also now requiring a mixed-use incorporation with the design of the facility. So this would definitely provide control over the proliferation of the use, similar to we see in option two. And it would provide specific standards which could be crafted to specifically address the concerns and to safeguard community economic diversity and ensure viability of the future commercial development. It would also incorporate a mixed-use component, such as a commercial retail, which will shield that space along corridors. It will add streetscape viability and vitality, and it will also help to ensure that there is some other commercial or retail impact on the property. This proposed regulation, again, it would require more of a substantial overhaul to the land development code based on the regulations we would be seeking to implement. So what could this possibly look like? It would be very similar to option two with a lot of the design and locational requirements. However, there would also be requirements for the mixed-use integration. And so possibilities would include that facilities in all zoning districts other than industrial are required to provide a vertically integrated mixed-use space comprised of commercial and retail, where a minimum of 40% of the ground floor area of the facility is dedicated to commercial or retail space. Uses that are ancillary to the storage facility, such as offices, you know, janitor closets, storage units, and support services, those cannot be counted as part of that mixed-use integration. It would have to be separated mixed-use, true mixed-use, commercial space. And then that the area should be oriented towards an abutting public rights-of-way, and when those rights-of-way don't exist, or where additional areas needed, they are shifted towards residential districts. Again, providing more of a, a better use buffer between those districts than the storage facility itself. And then where the facilities are located adjacent to a collector or arterial roadway, the facility shall provide an integrated mixed-use liner building which abuts the public roadway for the length of the facility, including any and all loading zones, as a shield from the facility to the public right-of-way. And within that, the liner shall be the length and height of the self-storage facility and be comprised of a minimum of 50% of gross area of the storage facility, counting all floors. So if your facility is 1,000, 100,000 square feet, just throwing out an easy-to-calculate number, through four floors, your liner building would be required to be 50,000 square feet, through however many floors you wished. If you wished to do three for the height of the building or two, obviously at four stories, if you're shielding it, you're kind of left with some disproportionate ceiling heights. But however they wish to differentiate it, it could be a possibility. So the option that we kind of examined as being the best fit would be in option number two, which would limit the total number of facilities based on per capita, and then couple that with the conditional use and specific design and locational specifications. And so with that, I will open it up to council for questions and some direction and discussion.
Okay, I'll open up for any council discussion. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we're talking about per capita, how many facilities do we have now in Cape Coral?
I don't have the number off the top of my head. I know it was within the ordinance. Ooh, I'm blanking on the number. Unfortunately, I just don't have that number with me.
It's okay. Thank you. That would help me make a decision. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If you take a look at what I think you said, one per 20,000, you know, if we're a city of, of 200,000, you know, that's, that's 10 facilities. I would venture to say we're pretty close to that now.
We've got more than 20 probably.
And so we, we may exceed our number right from the get-go is one of my concerns. So that, having that number would be helpful, like councilmember Cosden said. I think the other thing that you, we need to look at, just look at the facilities around Cape Coral now. We've got some facilities that are single stories. We have some story, facilities are two stories or even three stories. So when you say one facility per 20,000 residents, I think we need to be looking at square footage of the facility. To me, that's better defined because I can build a 10,000-square-foot storage facility or I can build a 30,000-square-foot storage facility because of the second floor, third floor option that I may decide to construct. But then I am compelled only to have one per 20,000 residents. So to me, I think a much better approach to look at it would be the square footage, a square footage approach instead of just a facility because there's such a, a wide range of what a facility is.
And, and just to kind of piggyback off of that, Mr. Struvey from our office actually was able to provide me with the ordinance, and square footage approach is how it is listed within the ordinance as it was determined. So currently, there's an estimated 1,500,000 square feet of existing self-storage space within this facility and an additional 1,600,000 in permitting process under construction for a total of 3 million, 3,100,000 square feet of total self-storage facility existing or forthcoming within the city.
And...
Yeah, they're quick, they're quick.
Right. We're almost doubling what we have now. You know, so we, we set a parameter, we may either be there or get there fairly quickly. But I do, no matter where we set that number, I think that's as far as planning for, for those facilities throughout the, throughout the city, I think the square foot approach is, is much better. And then try to determine exactly what we feel the need is in the community. So once we kind of identify that, look at the square footage, I think we can back into what that number is. So I would, I would also agree with that type of, of an approach instead of just a singular facility count. So that's where I'm at. Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I kind of go back to the part of, you know, why we're at this point and what is it, where is it? And is it, is it infringing on residential citizens and is it prohibiting other types of commercial for, for being there? And so certainly, the location of where it is, I think, I think is important. So identifying restrictions on where they can be, I think, is certainly a part of it. And then the aesthetics of it as well. You know, when I think about the Cove on 47th, I, I've been asked by numbers of people, where are all those people going to park? Where are they going to park? Well, the parking is inside the building. You'd never know it. But, but because of the way it's positioned inside of the building, you, you don't know. And so I think that as we think about mixed use and storage, if it's done right, you know, I think there, in many cases, you'd never know there was a storage facility there. So certainly having the, you know, similar to car washes to, to base on, you know, a conditional approval, I think, gives us a lot of flexibility there. I had the same concern that the mayor did, and it was, only I was looking at it more of number of units versus number of facilities, but it could go either way. The thought that someone would put up a, a facility that would only have 20 units in it, well, that's a facility. So too bad, there goes one that could have been a, you know, a 400-unit facility. So somehow, some way, it had to be units or square footage, for me anyway, not a, just a, a number of facilities. And last, I'm just a little concerned about putting an actual number on it, that we're not here four years from now, five years from now saying, gosh, we had, you know, way more influx into the city that we've known of. Or we get, you know, we get more space commercially where those commercial participants in our community need a place to store things and, and we can't build another facility or give no one permission, you know, to do that. And, you know, by keeping the storage facilities in industrial areas, certainly price per square foot of the project ends up being less than when it gets out in mainstream. And so from a cost perspective, I know many of the, many of the, like, so many people have talked about getting manufacturing facilities here. Most of the manufacturers put themselves in an industrial position where they do all their own storage internally. But some of the smaller manufacturer, manufacturing companies, they have room only to produce their goods. They don't have a place to store all their goods until those goods are shipped and whatnot. And so they'll use ancillary storage facilities for that. So assuming we can get transit to interstate highways to get it out of town, and assuming we can get those manufacturers to come to town, many of them will need storage for their goods prior to shipment. And, and so I'm not, I'm not so sure that I'm a fan of, of putting a limit on the number of them. I, I am a fan of having a per capita look at either the number of square feet or the number of units, which will allow that number, if you will, to grow over time as population grows and as we would, as we would have more manufacturing and commercial entities move into the area. And certainly a fan of, of mixed use with the thought that, you know, you'd never even know there was storage there. So I think, I think I'm, I think I'm more in favor, and I'm sorry that, I know you're recommending option number two. I, I like the conditional use, but I'm, I'm not in favor of limiting the total number of facilities.
Would you be more in favor of an option three then, based on the mixed-use component or combination of two and three?
I think I'm in, I think I'm in favor of conditional use with, with a limit on either square footage or actual storage units based on a per capita approach.
Okay, councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. You kind of touched on my, my comment there at the end. Option three with the required mixed use, is that anywhere in option two?
Currently not, but like I said, that's just possibility. So there can be amalgamation of both of them if you wish, or it could be, we could take it, there's, the whole floor is open to any possibilities. That's why we're here having the discussion.
Yeah, because I, I do like the idea of requiring mixed use for, maybe as a condition of anything over, you know, keeping that, that limit on standalone storage facilities. But if someone wants to incorporate mixed use, that could be an exception to go over and above what that limit is. That's possible. So that's kind of incorporating two and three together because I think what we, what we do need is the commercial space and the retail space. And you can hide storage over and above. You know, you could put a four-story facility and then have the bottom floor be all retail and commercial. And I'm, I've always been a fan of mixed-use projects. You know, I think it's the best use of space for what we have. So for me, it would be either a combination of two and three. I do like setting the limit, but maybe being able to, like I said, have the, a mixed use as an exception or somewhere that can go over the limit. Because I don't want to tell someone who bought a piece of property that you can't use it for whatever you want. You know, you do have property rights, so saying that you have to use it this way gives them those options. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with the square footage determination as far as that versus the, the individual. I think even more jarring, and hopefully we can get those numbers, we've had them before during other discussions, is not only the, the square footage that's in the queue and total, you know, build-out permitted, which is two or three million, I believe you said, but that in relation to the other commercial square footage that we have throughout the city, it becomes even more jarring. And that alone to me is, is enough of a, a reason to move forward in that, in that regard. Option two, I would prefer, I think, you know, we've got to be mindful also with regards to conditional use, depending on what sort of elements we set up in that conditional use. It may be sort of a rubber stamp type deal anyways if we don't define those closely enough because we have obligations here to meet certain criteria. When people come forth with conditional uses, we can't just look at it and say we don't like it. You know, so we've, we've got elements that we've got to meet and analyze. And so that's going to be critical with this and the, and the previous topic with regards to how we structure that, to allow ourselves some deference with regards to how we, we now analyze those. I, I do agree though with councilman Walsh's possibly merging the mixed use in as, as a option two, because I think a lot of the commercial uses that we have in the city are single-level uses. I don't think that by opening up the, the vertical for storage facilities is going to limit that use if, as long as we require that commercial component on the bottom. That's, that's not the storage. I think you can kind of have your cake and eat it too with that, with regards to that. I understand from discussions with, with previous developers that it like makes that a little more difficult and it's not as desirable from a cost standpoint, but that's not necessarily the business that we're in, is, is trying to make the developers more wealthy. I think a lot of it is just making sure that we, we create opportunities for our residents to have more than, than adequate commercial opportunities available to them nearby their, to their homes. And so that, and I think also it makes our position a little bit more legally defensible moving forward with regards to any other restrictions that we place on this is that we did leave the door open for that development with regards to mixed use. So for that reason, I would be leaning towards option two.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so the, what we have in front of us on paper says one per 20,000 residents. What's the number that you're recommending as for square feet? I don't know how I can make a decision if I don't know that. That's my problem.
I, I don't know that we've developed one. We'd have to look at existing and then look at built-out cities, like for a comparison to try to see where we might, where we might want to be.
Okay, that would be good to see.
That is correct. I mean, in going that route, we would definitely have to examine it a lot more in-depth to determine the appropriate square footage at maximum build-out that we would deem necessary to be proposing. What you were just seeing, that one per 20,000 was not a hard recommendation. It was just a proposal of, hey, this is what it could look like. And we've seen ranges from other municipalities from 10 all the way up to 30. So that was just a possible option. It wasn't a hard number saying this is exactly what we feel it needs to be.
Okay, that makes sense. And I would still like that number of how many we have in Cape Coral.
If you recall, when we were going through the moratorium exercise, the industry standard was 10 square feet for every one in population. We had some discussion that being how we don't have basements, it might be more appropriate to be more at a seven, one per seven. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, and then we do have 17 existing self-storage facilities.
Wow, all right.
And we're getting ready to double that number.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could.
All right. The numbers that we use for population, do we get that from census data or is that?
Correct.
From the census?
Correct. That's what we would be basing, that's what other municipalities have done.
Okay, thank you.
So when we adopted the moratorium regarding storage, the whereas clause indicates, as Amy stated, the applicable industry standard for it, which is five to 10 feet per capita, which is the square footage. When you add that based upon our current population, it is 1 million to 2 million. And so as we have provided evidence before, right now, we're slated at 3.1 million, 3.1 million square feet. So if you take our current population, we are a million more than what is the applicable industry standard for square footage per capita.
So if you, if you escalate out the 200,000 to our full build-out at 400,000, essentially we would be saying we don't need any more.
Right. I'm going to go with option two.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, like the mixed use and encouraging going vertical, I think what's going to happen with some of the older storage facilities that have an extremely large footprint, their property value is going to go up and I believe they'll be removed because of the land costs. So I would like to encourage vertical and as well figuring out a way to, to slow down the momentum. Yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. I like the idea of incentivizing the first floor mixed-use development in some way, not necessarily making it a mandate, but making it some type of, you know, enhancement to their development that, you know, there's an incentive, incentivized reason for them to do it. I'm really reluctant on setting a number only because, you know, granted, you know, there are a lot of Florida comparables in here, and Amy mentioned the, the differences that were already referenced. But, you know, our city also has a lot of restrictions with regards to storage and... regards to storage and ancillary structures on, on properties and limiting the access for storage on personal property, on people's homes, properties themselves. So I, I just, it's, I don't know how, you know, how much of an industry standard we apply to, you know, with regard to storage and our needs. So that's my only reluctance on this, is because, you know, I, I can't imagine developing these types of businesses and them not being sustainable. I mean, people are doing that analysis. I don't know how we would do it better than what the industry is doing. So that's my only reluctance on setting a number. I'm not saying I can't get there, but I'm going to need more information to, to validate that. But if, as I said, with the mixed-use piece, I do like that. I think that's a really good way to go, but I like to incentivize it, not, not mandate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think one thing that we could do also with the, with the mixed use now, I know in your presentation, you stated 40%. I personally believe one way that we could incentivize it is if the first floor, 100% of the first floors is commercial or retail, then that gives them the opportunity to build the storage on the second, third floor, wherever they end up. And I think that would be, we're now taking away from commercial space as we know we need throughout the city. That's one of our major deficits. And the way that you can incentivize it, maybe that type of a project may not meet the, fall in the requirement for this square footage formula that we're going to use. So in other words, if a person wants to come and build a facility where the first floor is 100% commercial or retail, they have the option to do self-storage on the second or third floor, and then maybe it doesn't apply to the formula that we are going to identify at some later date. So that would incentivize them to build the commercial, what we need, on the ground floor. But for me, in order for me to support that, it would have to be 100% on the first floor, and then allow the second and third floor, or whatever the height requirements or restrictions are for that parcel. They can, they could build a self-storage, and maybe it doesn't apply to the formula. So I could definitely support some type of additional caveat to that with option two. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, just something else. I don't even know if it's possible when I see these new apartment complexes being built. And some of them offer garages that people can rent that have an apartment there. Is there a way of incentivizing them building some storage over them garages that they can offer to their clients as well, and cut, you know, cut down on traffic as well? So it's a way of adding storage, but keeping it in their community that's pre-existing. So I don't know if there's any way to make it advantageous for a developer to implement that. But the garages I see, they have a footprint, and they're only one story. So if we can encourage vertical and give them some more ways to add a service for the community they're building, that might be a way. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Yeah, thank you. I, I would caution us to, to be looking at, if we will, industry standards as far as comparables. We are relatively unique. Like it or not, our codes currently say that you can't have outside storage at your home. And so with the advent of home-based businesses, you know, and more and more self-employment, that's been encouraged and legislation has been put through to allow it. You know, more and more people want to have those businesses, and there is no way to store what they use in their business at their home. So I don't think we've really seen the advent of that, you know, proliferate through these industry standards, if you will. And so with, you know, I would just say that we'd be sensitive to that, that when we're looking at ranges, well, the range, industry standard is, is five to 10 square feet per, per person or whatever. Well, I, I would say we'd be definitely on the top end of that, more at the 10 per person than anywhere on the bottom, considering our other regulations that we have that many other cities may not, may not have. So I would just caution us as, when we look at these standards, so to speak.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I want to send you all some data from the self-storage. You know, there's a site that tracks all of Florida compared to the national average. The state of Florida's average is 6.29 square feet per person, which is higher than the national average of 5.4. So 5.4 national average, Florida's at 6.29. And then we can calculate where we're at compared to the Florida average. Just, just data.
Well, it sounds like for sure on this topic that we need some additional discussion.
I think, well, I had basically four for option two, but then there was some other, the other ones also kind of said, let's look at, you know, kind of having some MX and some, some square footage or unit. So, I mean, we can look at a way of trying to craft something around the, the mixed use, option two, with some additional, you know, square footage options, if, if it's not MX. Because there was three of those. So we're, with Hayden being here, it could wind, could wind up being a, a 4-4 on moving forward. So definitely are going to need to wait, I'm going to need to wait to kind of hear what his thoughts are. Because we do need to, you know, have something November, December-ish. Otherwise, we're going to have an expiring moratorium. So I need to hear from him, kind of position that. And then if I need to come back because it's a split, then maybe before that, we can work on some further tweaks.
Okay. Councilmember Carr?
Just a question for, for Mike. We're going to separate these two with regard to bringing them back, right? The car wash, it sounds like we have ability to move forward. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Walsh?
So you're, you're waiting on more people to say yes on the mixed-use component of it? Or, because I think if, if everyone was pretty much at option two, and only three of us said, let's go ahead with the mixed use, maybe we could just go down the line and vote on, and get you more of that clarification today? Or what's the?
Option two is, right now, the, the, the one that has the most support. There was a couple other ones on, looking at, as opposed to just requiring a vertically mixed-use integrated, possibly looking at square footage parameters. So I need to kind of figure out what, what Councilmember Hayden would like in order to kind of shake that loose. Is that, are you, is that? I'm saying, if, if we just go down the line and give you those, you know, the, the two or three people that might have said no, might have changed their opinion on it. I don't know. I'm okay with that.
So you want to find out if a council member would support some type of mixed-use exclusion, maybe towards the formula, or what's, what, what are you, what, what, what's your ask? What are you looking for when, when you talk about mixed use?
I'm okay. Let's just go down the line for option two, if that's what, what the consensus is.
Okay. All right. We'll do that first.
I think some of us supported like a hybrid. I would support a hybrid.
With, with mixed use?
Right.
Yeah, with mixed use. So, and I also wasn't clear, but I only wanted to do square foot, not...
I got, that's what I got for you.
Not, okay. So that's where I stand. I, yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm not in favor of limited total number of facilities. I would, I would support limit the square footage per capita. And I do agree with providing some type of incentive or exception for mixed use.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm for the mixed-use vertical. And when we look at the past history of other developed areas, I don't look at that data as really the future. But what another council member said, I think we're going to see a lot more home businesses in the future, less big-box stores. And I think there's going to be a need for storage. So, but I'm for the vertical and mixed use, because I think that covers both.
Yeah, for me, option two, square footage, mixed use, either an incentive or an exclusion like Councilmember Steinkie and Councilmember Carr said. But for me, not 40%. It would have to be 100% commercial or retail on the first floor, and then gives them the option to have storage on the, on the second, third floor.
Agree.
Yeah, if I understand correctly, if we're going to do the square footage, it's more, more than likely is going to eliminate any future outright square footage facilities, period. So then the real discussion is, do we want to create a carve-out for mixed use?
Exactly. That's what I was, that's what I was just trying to get.
That's all we're doing here. And so my answer would be yes to two with that. And, and I misinterpreted, I'm sure it wasn't the presentation, that my desire would be the first floor entirely to commercial and any sort of mixed-use component as well. With the exclusion of square footage or, um, storage.
Yes, I agree. Same.
I like the mixed-use idea. I'm, I'm just not comfortable having any restriction on amount unless I, there's more information that would validate that for me. So that's my position.
Councilmember Steinkie, I see your light on. Did you already?
No, you got me.
Okay.
I got my direction. Thank you.
All right. It's 12:50 now. I think we're going to take a break. Since we've got three more topics here to discuss, we'll come back at 1:20. All right. It's, uh, twelve fifty now. Uh, I think we're going to take a break since we got three more topics here to discuss. We'll come back at one twenty.
...
The next item on the agenda, item four B three, accessory dwelling units, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to turn this presentation over to Development Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thanks, Mr. City Manager. I am Patrick Carlton-White. I'm a senior planner downstairs in the Department of Development Services. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll open this item up for discussion. The topic of accessory dwelling units, I'd like to summarize briefly. Accessory dwelling units are a defined term. It means an ancillary or secondary living unit that has a separate kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping area, existing either within the same structure or on the same lot as the primary dwelling unit, and that's defined in the Florida statutes. They're colloquially known as granny flats, garage apartments, carriage houses, pool homes, and ancillary units. Recognizing the shortage of affordable rentals in the state of Florida, the legislature encourages local governments to adopt ordinances to authorize the construction of ADUs. On the right is a picture of just a contemporary detached accessory dwelling unit. The local housing incentive plan contains affordable housing advisory committee's policy recommendations that was presented to City Council in December last year. Included within that plan was a recommendation that the city consider ADUs. At the council hearing, there was a discussion about the recommendation, and ultimately was left in the report and requested that the subject be examined at a future committee of the whole. In 2019, the city attempted to regulate ADUs. They were proposed to be permitted in the R1 zoning district. Finding them a topic requiring special attention, they were pulled from the 2019 LDC code amendment. ADUs are not portable. They are not RVs, they are not tiny homes on trailers, and they're not tiny homes on trailers that have skirts to hide the wheels. Another example of an ADU is pictured to the right. That's a modern ADU above a detached two-car garage. Supporters of ADUs will note that they provide additional housing options for entry-level housing, seniors, and supplemental workforce housing. ADUs provide a more dispersed method of increasing density in an area compared to multifamily, multi-story developments. And ADUs can be placed to increase density where services and utilities warrant, which encourages smart growth of cities. But opponents to ADUs will note that they increase density in an area which results in more cars, more water and sewer use, more demand on city services. They can create parking problems on smaller lots. They can result in additional curb cuts, increasing the chances of accidents. They could not be adequately buffered if they were crammed onto smaller lots, and it can be difficult to enforce use restrictions should any be placed. And by that, I mean any restrictions on affordability, or perhaps no vacation rentals, or family members only. Picture to the right is what is not an ADU. That is a tiny home on wheels I found for rent in Matlachay. Not an accessory dwelling unit. Lastly, kind of wrapping this up, ADUs, or not wrapping this up, but I'd also note that ADUs can provide additional housing opportunities. They provide homeowners increased use of their own private property. They generate additional taxes per single-family home site. There's a better opportunity to age in place and provide multi-generational housing, and neighbors, we believe many of neighbors' concerns about privacy can be mitigated through zoning controls. I looked at a number of different communities, largely within the state of Florida, to see how they were regulating ADUs. The city of Naples allowed them, they allowed one by right in the RE or residential estate district. That might sound familiar, because we also have a residential estate district where we allow guesthouses. It is the only zoning district in the city where something like this is presently allowed, but is a very uncommon zoning district. In Fort Myers, and you know, this table, you've probably already reviewed it. I won't line-by-line it. I would like to call your attention to the variety of the different ways these places are treating them. There's quite a spread. As you know, in the city, when we permit things, we can permit something by right. We can permit something by conditional use, where it's essentially by right, but there's additional conditions. Or we can permit it by special exception, which requires a public hearing. I personally, in reviewing these, didn't find any examples where they required special exceptions. But all of them, if they were going to allow them, required a conditional use permit, which was something more than just by right permit and approval. One of the other common things, common trends noticed, was the majority of them required an additional parking space. There were a number of them, including St. Petersburg, and Estero, and Sarasota, and Miramar. That included a restriction on whether, on how that unit could be used. Sometimes, in some instances, was the restriction was family members only. In some instances, it was a minimum stay of seven nights or more. So there were a variety of different rental limits. The other, I guess, thing that I found a lot of spread and variance in was a number of them provided an explicit statement that said that the ADU does not count towards the density limit of the future land use district. And that's important, that's an important thing, I think, to note. Should we go down this path, we would want a similar statement. The single-family future land use designation has a 4.4 units per acre, and that was calculated pretty close to one house per 10,000 square feet. So if these dwelling units were, in fact, allowed, they would, they would mess up that calculation unless we include it in exclusion. A couple other interesting notes. I really liked a code I found in Fort Myers that said if it was attached, and that's one of, as you're aware, these ADUs can be detached, they can be attached. But Fort Myers had a code that noted if it's attached, the front door shouldn't be visible from the, from the main frontage. The St. Petersburg had an interesting requirement that any extra, any exterior outdoor space on a second floor of an ADU needs to be inwardly oriented so that, to reduce the ability, or the, I guess, the likelihood that a neighbor might feel as though they're being looked down upon from a neighboring ADU that might have a balcony. We found in Estero, an interesting code that if it was attached, the front of the ADU must look like a single-family home. We found in Fort Lauderdale, an interesting code that, I think it was just an out-of-date code, no ADUs except for servants' quarters. And those were for persons other than immediate family, so that was a rather odd one. And we also saw a broad range of the size standards, ranging from 30% of the, of the single-family home being the maximum, all the way up to about 12,000 square feet. That was, that was the largest I saw, except for Naples, which in that residential estate district let them get very large. So before staff proceeds to craft any new regulation on this, we wanted to bring this to the committee of the whole to see if this is something you want your staff expending time and resources on. If you are interested in exploring this topic, we are certainly willing to do so. But we wanted to have a brief discussion with you and, and see if you were interested in having a second council meeting to discuss this further, or is this something we should not spend our resources on?
Thank you. I now open up for council discussion. Councilmembers, thank you.
Thanks. And I was the one, a year ago, that, that recommended that we at least keep it in the plan to talk about it at a further time. So for me, I've seen and heard in our community, we need more affordable housing. We need more affordable housing. And it's always talked about, but no actions were ever taken on it. And the only thing that, the only thing that tends to be the solution is to have, you know, a multifamily unit where we give solution is to have, you know, a multifamily unit where we give incentive for lower rents and whatnot. And then everyone in the city doesn't want multifamily units. So, so there's got to be more solutions to the affordable housing situation that we face, and, and this is one of them that I think if properly managed, I, I have a, a personal, I guess, stake in it, only because I lived in, in two of them in the course of my lifetime. And as, and when we think about affordable housing, one of the things that our citizens today face is multi-generational requirements in their home. People are living longer, their children are coming home to take care of them, they'd like to have a little bit more of a separation of where they live, but be there to take care of their parents. On the other hand, kids are staying home longer and going to, and going to college while they're at home. And, and you know, lastly, we've got, we've got people that have lived in their homes for a long time, they planned for year one of retirement, they didn't plan for year 20 of retirement, and taxes have gone up, and utilities have gone up, and eggs and gas and everything else has gone up, and, and so the, the affordability of their own home that they live in, it becomes less and less affordable. And so to have an ancillary source of income, if that individual had an ADU that was on the property, it would bring another source of income to them, to allow them to stay in their home and make their home more affordable for them. And so for me, it's not a matter of have them or don't have them, it's a matter of having the right, you know, for us to show up on this grid where we have the concerns that we have handled in the grid of what would be required if there was going to be an ADU. The lot size, it has to be a certain lot size, certainly with density requirements. If it required a triple lot, well, then that, that, you know, helps with density, and you're not busting the density, so to speak. If it's, if it's parking, well, then that's a requirement. There's got to be enough room for an additional parking space. If there's not additional room, then they can't, then they can't have an ADU. So I, I think it's, it's more, for me, it's more a matter of how do we find out how that we can use this as a component part of affordable housing in our, in our area, both for people that need the housing, and for people that need the support, and for people that need an additional source of income to stay in the home that they, that they currently reside in. So that's it, that's, that's it for me. I, I'm supportive of the concept, but certainly with requirements that, that meet the concerns, meet the, the needs of the community as well. That's where I am.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, I'm for, and for a lot of the reasons that I'm not going to repeat that you just But we can create it in a way where it's an asset for the city and not, not decline the city. So I think, you know, having the proper space to do it in the right fashion, where it doesn't degrade an area, I'm all for it.
Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Cora?
Yeah, I, I'm not necessarily a supporter of this as a whole. I think the restrictions that I would need to see would be unenforceable, quite frankly. I mean, I think some of those options are discussed here, and the difficulty of enforcement. I think, you know, you're effectively creating a duplex anywhere you want to put one if we were to open it up completely, but I think owner occupation on the property is important if it were to get to the point of approval. I wouldn't want to see it as a rental-rental scenario for a property owner, to make it a complete investment opportunity. I think in-law suites are separate from this, correct? In other words, an in-law suite may not necessarily meet the definition because it may lack a kitchen. I mean, what does a kitchen entail? Is there a definition for kitchen?
Well, at least in the city right now, I don't recall if we have the term kitchen defined or not, but it is a common thing we look for when we are looking to see whether or not an ADU is proposed on a building permit but not written down. And specifically, it's the hookups for the stove.
For the stove, okay.
Yeah, and I would say that an in-law suite would be considered one of these, would be an ADU.
If it didn't have a stove hookup, would it be? In other words, if you have, if you have an in-law suite, just as, you know, I think, I think they do exist already in our community, but I think they're absent some of those features of a typical kitchen would have, to make it completely separate, where they're using the, the main structures, kitchen facilities for major cooking, but they have a little fridge maybe, or some circumstance like that, but...
Yeah, we've, we've definitely encountered those before.
I just think the density issue's a big factor. I think, you know, we just drive up and down our streets now, we have parking issues already with just normal family size and the lack of garage use. I mean, we could, we could list off the examples, I'm sure we could all see, either seen ourselves or received complaints about. I don't know if this is the answer for our affordable housing crisis, so to speak, but I'm just not a proponent, only because of the density, I think the impact on the neighborhoods would be more negative than positive. So absent some epiphany or significant change or information or enforceable code, I wouldn't be a proponent of this ordinance, or potential ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I agree for a lot of the reasons stated. I think it's, unfortunately, it's ripe for abuse, and to get to a point where I would support it, would be just a ton of regulations that frankly wouldn't be enforceable. I said originally when this got brought up that it wasn't going to be something I support, and while I appreciate the work and the information that you brought forward, I'm still not willing to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Costin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I can actually get behind this, although I think it's kind of a moot conversation, because I'm not convinced there's a lot of properties in Cape Coral that could do this based on the lot size, so, but yeah, I'd be interested in having more of a conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, for me, I mean, you know, I've probably, in my career, I've probably built, if I had to say, at least 30 in-law apartments over the years, and typically in a, in a variety of locations. None here in the city of Cape Coral, of course, or, or Lee County. Typically, the, the threshold that Councilmember Cora was asking about is the stove, an oven. You can put a countertop in, you can put cabinets, you can put a bar sink, typically is how I would classify it, as a bar sink. You can put a standard-sized refrigerator in. The only thing that you can't put in is a range or a hood. And, you know, if you go on Facebook right now, they are 80, there is ADUs in our city right now. There's people converting garages over to living space. The ads are online now, and our code enforcement is, in my opinion, stretched thin already. We already have a variety of ordinances on the, on the books that they can't get to now. So I think the enforcement aspect of this would be a nightmare personally. You know, if you've got a triple lot, your in-laws, your parents, even, you know, one of your children, they're a family, if they find themselves in need where they need a place to go and live, you can put an addition on, you can put a bedroom on, you can put a living room, you can put a bathroom, and they can move into it, you just got to use the same kitchen. Well, if it's family members, I'm sure that could be done very easily. But if you want to rent it to someone for income, you want to rent it to someone that's looking for lower rent, I can't get behind that. You know, when you look at this, if we were even going to entertain this at all, which, again, my, my vote would be no, was you would have to look at a variety of topics that come along with this. Impact fees that single-family residential home pays, assessments, because all of those will be doubled as far as the services that will be provided to that particular home compared if it was just a single-family living there. So if we were going to go down this path, I think you would definitely have to look at those. They would have to pay, pay more. I think it would only be allowed if it was attached, not detached. But I just think this isn't the, this isn't the answer. This is putting a Band-Aid on a gaping wound, in my opinion. If we want to address the affordable housing component in our city, I have no problem having that discussion, but putting a Band-Aid on the problem, in my opinion, and causing more problems for the community. Because one thing we haven't, I haven't heard one person mention is about the resident next door. That is a concern for me, too. That particular resident that owns that parcel and that property, they may be for it, but the neighbors on either side or in the rear of them, they may not be. And I think we have a duty to protect them just as much as providing some type of avenue for accessory dwelling units. I personally, I'm not in the, I'm not interested in making our community look like Matt Lachey. I'm not interested in making our community look like Lehigh Acres, myself included. I lived in a ADU myself. It wasn't really allowed, but I did live there for a short period of time. It wasn't allowed, but it was there. I rented it. So I've been down that path as well as you have, but I personally don't think that's the answer for the problem, and it's not the answer that I think that would benefit our community, and that's what I'm most interested in. The decisions that we make, we have to make sure that they benefit the community. If we want to look at a multifamily unit, we got 300 acres that we own up in the Northwest. If we want to have some type of a, some type of a affordable housing there, or state has recently passed some legislation that's carved a path for developers for incentives, rebates for affordable housing, so it's there. We just haven't seen it in our city yet as far as developers coming forward to try to utilize some of those incentives that was incorporated at the state level. You know, so for me, I, I can't support moving forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. As a side note, I believe you're referring to the Live Local Act, and we have three projects in the pipeline.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Shepard, and then we'll go to Councilmember Costin.
Hopefully, I could change some minds. I don't want to be the city of no, I want to be the city of how, hell. So all the negative points I heard, I agree with. I, I don't believe it's to fit for the average Cape Coral home. But I also know that our city is never going to build out most likely with the right amount of commercial. So it's that much more important that we are a magnet for high-end build-out and more high-end gated communities. And when you get communities that are gated and high-end, and their lot size might be a half acre, and they want to build a $4 million house, then they might want to build quarters for a live-in nurse, or live-in house help, or things like that. And I don't want to be the community that says, we don't want you to build a $6 or $7 million house here. There are certain features that come with high-end build-out, and I don't want to create stops that won't encourage high-end build-out. I, I know there's already in the pipeline some high-end communities that are, that are being thought about, and land being acquired, and this is something that can be added to bring more value to our community and tax revenue. So like I said, I agree with all the negatives. It doesn't work for, for our average build-out that we have now. I see the negatives, and when you, the more you think about it, the impacts when it comes to parking and, and public safety and policing codes and all that, I agree 100%. But I live very close to a community called Cape Harbor, and I can remember years ago, building, people building houses for eight and nine and $10 million, and were told they weren't allowed to do that. And to me, if you want to encourage high-end build-out, you have to give them the tools to create the high-end build-out. So I, so I want to, I want us to have a path to encourage high-end investment, so that's what I would like to add to it. I don't want to be closed-minded. We can protect all the negative things that we worry about and incorporate all that, so that all them negative things that came forward can't happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Yeah, thank you, and I thank everyone for at least considering it and, and having an open mind. You know, it's funny, I'm attached to the building business as well, and a couple things that were said. One is, it's already being done, but we don't have the code to crack down on, so to speak. People are building out their garages and whatnot, and so, so there's already been a demonstrated need for it, from whatever direction. There's been a demonstrated need where people are willing to break the law to do it. So there's, the need's there. We're not trying to fix something that, that isn't a problem. And the, and the other thing that is interesting to me is that, for instance, if, if the regulations were that it needed to be attached, I think we just talked about it being okay to attach it, because if you have the room, you can put an addition on the house, we just have the bedroom, the bathroom, the, the, the living area there, and have the refrigerator, and have the sink, and have everything there, but no stove. So what does it hurt to have a stove, then? Then you just make your regulation that it has to be attached, maybe we only choose to do attached ADUs, whatever it is. But, but the attached ADU's got an external entry, and the only difference that we're talking about is a stove. So, you know, I, I think there's, I, I stick by, and, and certainly, we make decisions as a body, and, and I, and I go along with that decision, but I would say that we're potentially being too closed-minded when it, it may be as simple as allowing a stove to be put in, and, and it would solve, it would solve a few problems. So that's, that's all I just wanted to add, were those two pieces that we, we could be quibbling and making a bigger deal than it is, but being able to put a stove in a place and allow mom to live attached to the house, or a caregiver, as Councilman Shepard said, or however it is, I, I think there's, I think there's a way to use this strategy in, in a way that will enhance what we have, maybe not fix it, it'll, it'll never fix it, but at least enhance it. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, just one other thing, too, that I've noticed, you know, when you have those type of an attached structures, typically, one of the requirements, it has to have access to the primary residence. And the reason that they do that is they don't mind, you know, if a family member's moving in, or parents, in-laws, whomever, but they have access to the primary residence. And I think that's one of the big variables that you see when you look around different areas, that, that's a key component. That way, they can't rent it out. It's not for income, it's typically for a family member. Something like that, I'm, you know, I might be able to support, but as far as an accessory dwelling unit, because accessory is just that, it's outside of the primary residence, in my opinion, whether it's attached or detached. So as far as that's concerned, I, I couldn't get behind that. If it's attached, it has access to, to the primary residence, and it's something constructed similar to that, then, then it's, it's a possibility. And I'll even take it one step feather, further, a lot of those type of units, even when they do that, you know, where it's an in-law apartment or stuff, typically, they put the stove in anyway and use it, but, you know, we can't control what people do outside, what the regulations are, but I see that done as well. But I think the two key components is, it's got to have, it's got to be accessible to the primary residence with an open doorway, and, and it has to be attached, but to me, that doesn't meet the definition of accessory dwelling unit. So I know we got a couple councilmembers missing, so it looks like we're split now, Mr. City Manager, so I don't know what we'll do to this point, but so far today, it doesn't move forward, it appears.
Correct.
All right, we will move on to...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Move on to the presentation for the SEAGLE regarding total compensation study for the police. We have one for police, we have...
We have one for police, we have one for fire. Mr. City Attorney, I know that the police department and the fire department had a desire to speak during this discussion.
They're not permitted pursuant to your rules. That'd be a violation of your council rules.
And what, what rule is that?
It specifically delineates within your council rules that, that these are not public hearings, that anything that ultimately regarding the committee of the whole is to be dealt with at the time that the matter was scheduled for public input. That was at the very beginning. That would have been the time for them to speak. Otherwise, you are, if you were to allow them to speak on this matter, it would not be consistent with your rules.
So could we hold the council to see if they're allowed? Or can we, do we have an opportunity where we could open up citizens' input again?
You can, you can suspend the rules if that's what you want to do.
Well, I mean, we're having a discussion on the compensation study, and they're a part of that discussion. I think it's just as important to hear from them than staff, because there's two sides of the story here. So however we can achieve that by consensus, I know I would like to hear what they have to say. They're a part of the process, in my opinion. Whether that's as a majority consensus from council, we allow them to engage in, in the discussion, or if we have to open up public input again, I don't have a problem doing that. So I guess with that being said, we'll go down the line and see what the desire of council is. I'm only one of, what do we got, six here now? So Councilmember Cos?
Yeah, so, and I just want, for clarity, right, if, whatever your will is, whatever it may be, so pursuant to your rules, you have the ability to suspend or amend your rules. It requires concurrence of the majority of the members and shall require that you articulate what that amendment or suspension would be of the permanent rules of the City of Cape Coral. So if you want to, for example, open up the public input part, which we've concluded, that would be the motion that would be made. If you want to ultimately allow them to speak during the individual item, that would also be the motion that would be made, because your committee of the whole does not permit public hearings for these type of matters. So probably the cleanest thing, if I were to recommend to you, is probably making an amendment, if there's a will to do that. Make an amendment that you open the public input portion to allow whoever to speak regarding, let me get the agenda item.
And while you're looking that up, I got another question for you.
Okay.
Why didn't you bring this up when Mr. Jones come up with Waysboro to speak today?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Jones, from Waysboro.
Yes.
Remember, we invited him up?
You did, you did.
How come you didn't bring this up then?
You know what? In fact, I was, I didn't even realize, other than you had asked the request, I probably should have stopped at that point in time.
Okay.
Technically.
All right. Councilmember Cos?
I would like to.
I would reopen citizens' input. I agree. That's what I would do.
Yeah, I'm open to either way. I mean, I don't want to, do we want to restrict them to a time limit, or are we just going to make it like a typical, I mean, I want to hear what they have to say as well. I'm not sure what the best mechanism is, but I'm open to whatever suggestion that allows them the opportunity.
Yeah, I'm not interested in changing all the rules, but I hear, I want to, and I know we've done this in other opportunities, at committee of the whole meetings, too, as well, with, you know, different organizations or developers that's come, they've come up to the podium and speak. So for me, I don't have a problem if, if, if we need a motion for that, then I'll, I'll open the floor. I didn't know we were allowed to have motions at committee of the wholes. I thought we could only have a consensus, so...
Well, only because this is an application of your rules. So this is the council's rules, and that's what, what you'd be altering. You're not taking any formal action on a, on an item other than a suspension.
So you would need a motion to suspend that particular rule for today?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, and the reason for the Waysboro is, remember, there was the discussion regarding specifically whether or not there was any interest of them to negotiate with the city. So in that regard, it wasn't really, they were speaking on the item other than addressing their, their desire, whether or not there's going to be an extension.
Okay.
So it's smidge different, but yet still the same concept.
I'll open the floor to entertain a motion to suspend that specific regulation for, for the discussion for item 4B, 4 and 5 in today's committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I think Ms. Cos.
Cos did, and we have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll open up for discussion. Good, sir.
I have a problem with suspending the rules. The rule's the rule. I have a problem with that. It is not against the rules for us to make a motion to make an amendment to the agenda. And if, and if we make a motion to, to make an amendment to it, to the agenda, to add citizens' input after item 4A4, and again, after 4A5, it would, it would allow for that input to happen at the end of the fire presentation, and it would allow for it to happen at the end of the police presentation.
You could also do that.
And, and that doesn't, that, so all we're doing there is just amending the, the agenda, not telling, not saying, "Okay, well, I know there are the rules, but we're not going to use the rules right now." So that's where I am. So I'll be a nay.
Councilmember Long?
What would the penalty be if we violated these rules? What would the penalty be if we violated these rules? So why don't we just ask them to come up when it's applicable, like we've already done before in this meeting?
That certainly, you certainly have the ability. I just want you to all aware.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr?
I don't want necessarily to violate the rules intentionally. I think that sets a bad precedent for any other meeting that we have, but I do like the suggestion that Councilmember Stanky made, and I also think that's, it doesn't limit it just to fire and police staff. If there were public here that want to make a comment at that time, they could also make it. So I think that would be a more appropriate motion after listening to it. So I'm going to remove my second from the initial motion.
Okay, and Councilmember Cos, and I think you made the motion. Do you want to readdress that? To possibly opening up citizens' input after item four and item five, only on those two topics?
Yes, if that makes everybody more comfortable, I'll change my motion.
And we got to, are we opening up citizens' input for any discussion, or only discussion on those two topics?
For this topic.
Okay. And do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay. Madam City Clerk calls a roll.
Carr?
Aye.
Cos?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Stanky?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff to start with. First one of which would be the presentation for the Siegel Company regarding total compensation study for the police.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Nancy Deutsch, HR Director. We have invited the city's compensation consultant here today to review the total compensation studies for both police and fire positions. These studies compare wages and benefits in the city to a group of mutually agreed-upon comparable cities. As you know, total compensation studies are typically used to inform union negotiations regarding total compensation, and they also help position the city's compensation package relative to the council's goal of achieving the 75th percentile of the surveyed market. As you know, we're in active negotiations with fire, and we will be negotiating the police contract next year. Prior to this meeting, I know there was some discussion, the last time we had this conversation, about the unions having an opportunity to meet and get their questions answered. Both representatives from both unions have met independently with the Siegel consultant to review their respective studies and get answers to their questions. I did want to mention that there was a last-minute update to the fire study, which will be addressed by the consultant shortly during, during his presentation. The slide presentation that's attached to the agenda, as well as the handouts that each of you received, were updated and amended accordingly. So I'd like to introduce James Britton from the Siegel Group to present a summary of their findings and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We were asked to conduct a total compensation study for the police and fire departments, and the first present, first presentation I'd like to give is for police. Thank you, appreciate that. So I'd like to address the project objectives, discuss the methodology that we employed during the course of the study, discuss our findings, and then lastly, address any questions that the council may have. So the objectives of the study were to conduct a total compensation market assessment to compare the city's police department pay and benefits information to the 75th percentile of the market. We collected and analyzed data regarding benefit offerings, including health benefits, retirement benefits, and paid time off benefits. The information that we collected was previously gathered by the city and their benefits consultant and provided to us for use in our calculations. During the course of the survey, we met with the, or before the survey kicked off, we met with representatives of the union and with the city, and we mutually agreed upon a set of survey targets for police and for fire. For police, we surveyed the police officer title, the, and then two other titles. We included the City of Clearwater, the City of Coral Springs, St. Petersburg, Tampa, and Port St. Lucie. The City of Fort Myers was also surveyed, and their information was gathered for informational purposes. It was not used in or to determine the market comparison. Overall, our studies found that at the, for the base pay, that would be the first table there, for base pay only, at the market 75th percentile of both the minimum and near the midpoint, and the maximum, we found that, and our analysis is based on the midpoint, we consider anything between 95 and 105% of market to be competitive. We compared, instead of using the average at the midpoint, we used the 75th percentile. All these numbers are representative of the 75th percentile at that market range. So at the mid-range point in the 75th percentile, comparing your police pay to the market, you're at 85% of market, which is less than the competitive rate that we look for. And when we add in the cost of the benefits, the position improves slightly, but you're still behind the market at the 75th percentile at the midpoint, at a market position of So the market survey included the benefits offering of health and retirement and paid time off. For the health benefits, we included medical prescription, dental, and vision. We compared the city's plan, the city's offerings, and their relative enrollment rate for those offerings to the offerings from the market. So we compared your cities based on, the majority of folks were in the employee-only market, so we weighted that average against the averages that came back from the, from your market as well. We also included paid time off benefits, and we found that the employee contributions for retirement slightly lead the market. Health benefits slightly lead the market at the 75th percentile, but the paid time off benefits are slightly behind the market. So for example, when we're looking at the total cost, the weighted health employment contributions, we found that the city was offering $12,417 annual contributions, and the market at the 75th percentile was offering $12,171. So you lead the market slightly, and then for the different plans, you can see the breakout there. For the employee-only plan, you are statistically in a dead heat. For the employee plus spouse, or employee plus child, or the family plan, the City of Cape Coral does lag the market at the 75th percentile, in some cases considerably. In terms of retirement contributions, we found that the market at the 75th percentile offered 26.95% of retirement contributions from the employer, whereas the city is offering 27.45%. So you slightly lead the market in that regard. And then in term of paid time leave hours, this is including vacation pay and any form of paid time off, including sick day, holiday, personal days. The market at the first five, at every one of those breakdowns, five, 10, 15, 20, and 25 years, you'll see those compared to the city, and at most of those markings, the city is trailing, in some cases, by as many as 15 to 20 hours. At this point, I'd like to open the floor for questions.
Thank you. I'll open up discussion. Any questions for up to this point as far as this topic? Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. With regard to the minimum comparison, are we utilizing the sign-on bonus as part of that number, or just the base pay?
Just base pay.
With regard to the pension contribution, were all the other jurisdictions defined benefit plans, or were they varying types of retirement plans?
The majority of the market were in the same plan you were, same type of plan.
And why is this, why is the contribution of the jurisdiction a relevant comparison for benefit purposes? In other words, you know, isn't the, you know, the benefit itself more comparable or something to compare to with regard to the market? Because some of the jurisdictions are going to put into their pension plans based on need and performance of the plan, not necessarily on a set number. That's at least been my experience. I mean, so how do we use that as a comparable with regard to our benefit package?
Well, if you're trying to compare the total cost of employment, which would be base pay plus the benefits, and you have to factor in some cost for those benefits. And when we're looking at the market, there's a defined cost to both the employee and the employer for each type of those benefit packages. So those, that amount of money, that fee, that, that payment was taken into account.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand why it's comparable with regard to our staff, you know, our police officers and other police officers, because if, for instance, other jurisdictions have a higher contribution or a lower contribution for the employee, or if they base their contribution based on the plan performance, I think the City of Cape Coral is somewhat unique that, I think we have a set number that we put in, correct? Is that the way we do it?
Yes.
So the only way that we would put in more would be if the plan failed with regard to performance and its obligation for financial, right? I mean, I'm just trying to understand why that's a relevant number with regard to our comparables.
Well, when you're taking you to a cost, the, the cost of the employer retirement benefit plan, every one of your peers is offering similar plans to yours. They have a monthly expenditure in employment costs to keep that employee employed. So if you're talking and comparing apples to apples and trying to figure out the total cost for an employee at that location or at your location, you have to include the cost of all benefits.
Okay. But if the benefit is they could retire at, say, 20 years versus 25, wouldn't that be a better benefit elsewhere?
That would be a benefit analysis discussion instead of a benefit-cost discussion, which is what we...
So this is strictly based on a cost analysis across the board?
That's correct.
Not necessarily the, in the benefit itself?
That's correct. It's my understanding...
And that also includes PTO and so forth. In other words, not the amount of time, it's the cost associated with it.
In this case, we looked at the number of hours, but it, again, that, that cost would be exactly, yeah, it would be the hourly cost for the employee.
Okay, but so we're using, which analysis? You said we looked at both. We looked at the number of hours, but we're looking at cost when we're comparing?
We're looking at number of hours for PTO.
Okay.
Which would be also included in the, not the base salary for the employee, but it is a comparison of the, the time off benefits here versus the time off benefits in your, in your market.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I saw your light was on.
I was just going to say, anything that has a cost related to the employment, direct or indirect, goes into the total cost of employing the position, regardless of the role. So we look at, what is the direct pay to the employee? What is the cost sharing for benefits that they give back on behalf of benefits? What is the money that the city puts in to provide the benefits? And at the end of the day, you have a net take-home, and then also a cost to the employer. And at the end of the day, you have a net take home and then also a cost to the employer. So when we're looking at the 75th percentile, we're looking at all costs related to that position. The ultimate goal is to, you know, if we want to hit the 75th percentile, are we looking at that just in salary? Are we looking at that in benefits? Because if, let's say, for example, instead of having a plan, we were just going to make that a cash payment, like another defined contribution. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, it's the cost that's relevant in the comparison. How it's used, what it's used for. At the end of the day, we're trying to compare, what does it cost us here to employ a police officer versus somewhere else? If we want to lead the market in benefit structure, then that may have a higher cost, and we'll be able to analyze that in comparison to other areas. So the whole point of all this data is to help, at some point, formulate a policy on where to go with total compensation, including benefits and salary.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate it. Like I said, the only one that I really had trouble understanding is the pension piece, because I do know that that is done differently at different jurisdictions with regard to the contribution of the employer.
Right.
So I don't, I just, I'm looking at it from the standpoint, like, we're saying we're good, but that could be because other jurisdictions aren't doing it the same. So that's the reason I've had a hard time with the pension piece, and that is a comparable with our total compensative package. That's really my only...
When you look at the defined benefit contribution rate, you have normal cost, and then you have unfunded accrued actuarial liability. If you want to look at what it costs per year, per employee position, you look at the normal cost. So for every year that any position works, what is the cost to the organization to accrue the benefit structure that's in place? If you're looking at the total aspect of whether you did buyouts, or you changed, you know, benefit structures without pre-funding them, or you had a planned performance loss, all that takes into account the unfunded, the amortized, unfunded accrued actuarial liability. So it's a way of basically looking at, if you want to look at just the benefit tiers to see, is our benefit tier richer than another, then you would only look at normal cost.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. Are we using geographically adjusted numbers or no?
Yes. There's a geographic adjustment for cost of labor, which is typically employed, it's standard practice to adjust for employment, I'm sorry, economic variability from one location to another.
Right, so that's already been played in?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have somewhere where those comparable cities, when their contract was renewed last?
No, that information was not gathered.
I think that's an important piece. If in fact, if in fact their contracts had just been renegotiated last year or earlier this year, certainly that disparity would show up more than if their contract had been established at the same time that the comparable numbers from our police force.
Allow me to clarify. All the data was gathered at a common time with contracts that were in force as of December 1st, 2023.
Okay, so I get that, but if their contract had been renewed just prior to that, they had a chance to adjust where we're now just going to adjust.
Yes, but we looked at the market conditions at that point, at that segment of time. If you choose to adjust your contract based on this information, then that would be a different segment of time, and that would be a different analysis and comparison. So when we looked at the contracts, we looked at the salary information and the benefit information, we gathered what was being offered at that point and what was the cost at that point. And certainly, if contracts have been renegotiated or new contracts have been put into place, then those numbers will have changed since then.
Okay. If it's not too much trouble, I'd like to know when each one of those cities' contracts, what the date of their contract is.
We can discuss that.
And last was just, in the total leave hours, that includes vacation, PTO, sick holidays, and personal days, I find it interesting, just doing some quick math, as I make my way through there, the year 15 is pretty interesting in that it's almost, it's almost identical in year 15. It's the years prior to 15 and after 15 that have a pretty good amount of disparity. Is that a finding that you have in there? Or has anybody asked a question of why is the difference relatively consistent except for year 15?
It's, we gathered the data, we analyzed the data, but as far as searching as to why at year 15 you happen to be equitable with the market or pretty comparable with the market, my guess would be that's the way your contracts are structured.
Because it would appear that we're, and I don't mean to be glib, but it appears that we want to be tighter with getting the people here, but we haven't taken care of them as well the longer they stay here.
It does appear that at year 15 you plateau, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I guess, you know, for me, total compensation study, in my opinion, is a point in time.
Yes.
You know, when you collect that data now, you know, if we're doing a three-year contract and we want to do, hey, the next three years, what's it look like for those other six cities or whatever cities that those sides agree to, I guess you could do a compensation study like that, but normally, a compensation study is just a point in time.
It is, and it's our, you know, it's our findings that in the public sector, it's typically an arms race. You can go to the 75th percentile here and award increases, and your peers are going to follow up and either meet or exceed what you've done, or they can afford.
And you said there was a geo-differential that's been applied?
Yes.
To this particular study?
Yes. Each of the locations, we use a service called the Economic Research Institute, or ERI, and they publish cost of labor geographic adjustments.
Okay. Can you go back to the slide in the beginning that showed the, actually, keep going back where you just came from. I was looking for the one that had the, keep going, one more. It showed the, we were 85%, and I think we showed on base pay, we were 85% to market, and with total compensation, we were 88%. There you go. When you looked at this data and you looked at the salaries that our police department has paid, did you happen to come up with a percentage of increase to get to the 75th percentile, using the data that you have?
On average, the listed point there for midpoint is 75% of the range for midpoint, so that would mean you're 15% behind.
15, okay, all right. And with total compensation, you'd be about 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Now that's your positions in the 75th range.
Right.
Okay.
As of December of 2023.
Yes, sir.
That's all the questions I have. Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, we're not talking about, at 88, we're not talking about, it's not 12% increase in pay.
That's correct.
12% behind the 75th percentile.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Mr. City Manager, any other staff members going to be speaking on this topic? No? Okay, all right, then I'll turn it over to the police union then. I'll open up citizens input for this particular item, which is 4B4, Presentation to Segal Company Regarding Total Compensation Study for the Police. I'll open up citizens input for that particular topic of discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Rob Goff, President of the FOP. I think first, before I start with this...
Let me stop you right there. Do we want to confine it to three minutes? Do we want to just allow them to go ahead and speak, so we can hear what they have to say?
I'd like to just hear what he has to say.
So everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I start with this other, these other things, I'll answer Councilman Stanky's question in regards to the contract expiration dates. Coral Springs, Clearwater, and Port St. Lucie all expire September 30th of this year, which means there'll be negotiating new deals probably, actually, right now, I know for a fact that Clearwater's in negotiations right now as well as Coral Springs. Tampa and St. Pete expire the same time we do, it's September 30th to 25th, so they'll be negotiating simultaneously with us. So in essence, all of these numbers are going to go up within the next year, so. One of the, one of our biggest concerns with the study was the use of the geographical differential. We found that, talking to our peers, I've talked to dozens of state presidents across the state, as well as had a long conversation with Mike Tucker, sorry, who is the Chief of Staff for the Florida State Lodge. He represents over 25,000 law enforcement officers across the state of Florida. While we all agree that other agencies do some sort of compensation study or some type of wage study for their, for the contract negotiations, nobody uses this specific type of geographical differential. Nobody, nobody, none of our peers have heard of using anything this specific. Typically, what the other agencies do is they just do a wage study, they look at the wages, and they determine where their pay should be based on their comps. They're not factoring in this type of specific differential. One of the things I looked at when looking at that, I could understand it if we were comparing ourselves to places outside of the state of Florida, if we were comparing ourselves to, say, cities in California or New York, where obviously the cost of living is substantially higher than it is here, I could see maybe where that would come into play, but not with what we're doing. And we're not only just comparing ourselves to cities in Florida, we're sticking to South Florida. I mean, our furthest city north is Tampa. I mean, we're all south of I-4 here. One of the other things that was concerning to me, after I had our last meeting with Segal, Zoom meeting, I contacted the Economic Research Institute myself and had a Zoom meeting with Drew Exxon, who's an employee of that company. When they do the geographic data, they're basically doing cost of labor as a whole. As we all know, in Cape Coral, the two biggest employers here are the city of Cape Coral and Lee Health. We're pretty much it here in the city. Everybody else is a much smaller type of employer. So if we're using cost of labor, we're really comparing ourselves, or using that labor is city of Cape Coral and Lee Health. One of the things I found most concerning with that is they use no information or have no specific job data from police or fire jobs. So basically, we're using this geo-differential on cost of labor, and there is zero information on our line of work. One additional thing that was kind of glaring in this study is the, I know when they put the graph up there, it was the cost of employee, employees, sorry, the employee cost of healthcare is what they used. They did show the graph, it kind of spaced out a little bit there, when you're looking at dependent care. One of the things that's glaring is the cost of dependent care here in the city of Cape Coral, and I think by losing that geo-differential, it would help bridge that gap a little bit with dependent care. One of the things I actually just noticed last night, I was going to mention it today, but I haven't had a chance to talk with city staff, because again, I just was going through the study again last night and noticed I did find a couple discrepancies with Segal's math on specifically regarding pages B3, B4, and B5, but I will be happy to go over that with city staff at a later date. I guess at the end of the day, our membership, you know, strongly disagrees with the use of the geographical differential. At the end of the day, though, no matter what, we saw the study up on the screen, we're lacking in pay, we know that. It's, those numbers are only going to grow. I know that, I guess basically our stance remains the same. One of the things I spoke about at the last council meeting, I know it can't be done here today at the Cal meeting, but our stance remains the same, we're just looking for some sort of direction, whether it be from council or be from the city manager's office, that we would like to see some sort of adjustment mid-contract to get us through that last year of the contract. Again, we know these numbers are going to grow, they're going to continue to grow. We're looking basically just to get, you know, caught up a little bit. I know mid-contract increases are not the norm. It was actually just done yesterday with FOP Lodge 93 in Orange County. They just came to a tentative agreement for a mid-contract raise to get them caught up, because they're also behind. I think theirs, from what I looked at, the paperwork and everything I saw from them, I think they were looking like an 8% increase just to get them through that last year. And then, again, they'll be negotiating next year along with us and increasing their pay. So I guess at the end of the day, what we're looking for is some direction either from council or from city staff, is to allow us to move forward with that. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'll open up for any questions. Councilmember Carr.
I just had a question. If we were to be able to be, you mentioned pay, would that be the only topic of discussion if we were to open it up early? Or would you want to do the whole contract?
Currently, we'd only be looking at pay. We wait for everything else till the contract is opened up.
Thank you.
A quick question for me is either for yourself or for Segal representative. My understanding, if we do not use the geo-differential, it's about 3%? Does that sound about right?
It fluctuates, depending on which position you're looking at. The information was put up, I'm actually looking at it here, the total compensation study overview, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's when they combine all the positions together. It's kind of a general average of everything. When you split the positions up individually, for example, our sergeants may be lacking more than our lieutenants. It's just, this is just an overview of everything kind of together. Those pages I mentioned a minute ago, B3, B4, and B5 are those positions divided up individually. I'm sorry, Mayor, what was your question again?
So the geo-differential, is it about 3%?
It fluctuates, I think. If you add up the total geo-differential, it puts us at a, about 6.7% and into the negative, if you add up the total geo-differential altogether. I'm not exactly sure, going through the study, exactly how that's applied. If you did the, say, 75th percentile of the geo-differential, it's about half a percent.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time. Anyone else wishing to speak on the presentation regarding the total compensation study for the police? Seeing none, yes?
Can I address some of the comments that were made?
Sure. But I'll go ahead and close the citizen's input aspect of it, so come on up.
I'd like to call your attention to page five of the report, where it does list the geographic differentials. And if you'll notice, the ERI factor for the city of Cape Coral is a 93.7, and for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of the peers, their geographic differential is higher than 93.7, or their ERI factor is higher than 3, than 93.7, which means the economic activity in those areas is greater than the economic activity here. The cost of labor for those areas is higher than cost of labor here. So all things being equal, even though police and fire are not part of the ERI factor, what we're looking at here is trying to standardize, we're trying to, in research terms, we're trying to take into account that variable in differences between affluence of communities from one location to another. If you look at the city of Port St. Lucie, they're at a 93.2% or 1.7% behind the city of Cape Coral. So the salaries for that institution, those salaries were increased by 1.7% so that we could compare apples to apples. This is a way of, and this is what the consultants, this is, consultants use geographic adjustments to try to take into account the choice of peer agencies. If we wanted to take the 10 highest-paid peer agencies around the state of Florida and use those to compare to the city of Cape Coral, then there would be comments about that. If we wanted to compare the 10 least affluent communities in the state of Florida and compare those to the city of Florida, we'd have questions about why we chose those and what kind of adjustments we used to try to equalize pay and to control for that variable. And that's why consultants and compensation consultants use some form of geographic adjustment to take that into account.
Good. Mr. City Manager.
Said in another manner, but no different than that, this is one of the reasons why we don't have a problem with working with the unions on picking the cities to be a comp, because we know we're going to apply a geo-adjustment factor to normalize... because we know we're going to apply a geo-adjustment factor to normalize the costs in those other areas. Otherwise, you wind up with, they're picking five and we're picking five, and we're trying to, you know, we're trying to find ones that benefit what we would like, and they're trying to, you get together, you pick five comparable cities that offer five or six comparable levels of service, and then you use the geo-adjustment factor to basically normalize those.
Councilmember Carr? In this regard. Your experience as far as the geodifferential, is that something that is normally applied when you're doing compensation studies for other cities and counties?
In 12 years of conducting hundreds of compensation studies for public sector agencies across the country, I've never done a study without a geographic adjustment.
Okay. All right. And Mr. City Manager, what, I don't have any other lights on, what direction are you looking for, if any, today, or is this just for informational purposes?
None. This is informational purposes. You know, we said that we would analyze all of our labor units so that we had data and information to, you know, begin policy-level discussions regarding pay and benefits. And so it was only appropriate just to make sure that we did the data dump. And then, as we begin to move forward with discussions on where to go in different venues, you know, shade meetings or, you know, individual one-on-ones, I would like to utilize this data to begin crafting kind of that vision for where you'd like to go. We did utilize a comparison to the 75th percentile as opposed to a comparison to the median because it's been very clear, been made very clear to me the last several public meetings that you have all had that the 75th percentile is a target. So I wanted to make sure that the data was benchmarked against the 75th percentile.
Any other discussion by council before I move on? Councilmember Carr?
Just one more thing. We were sent the entire analysis, correct? Because I think some reference has been made to data that was not presented here today on our agenda.
I'm sorry?
The backup to this final report that we received. Isn't there?
There's a full report, correct?
It's not on today's agenda attachment, though, correct?
No, this is just a presentation on the report. If somebody would like a copy of the report, put in a records request or whatever, and that we can share it with whom.
No, no, I mean us. Did we, I thought we received that, did we not? I just looked for it and I couldn't find it, so. But I remember reading it, I just don't remember where I got it.
Yeah, it was sent.
Okay. I apologize. I just wanted to make sure that we do have it.
Okay.
All right.
Everybody have a copy of the report?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item 4B5, Presentation, Siegel Company Regarding Total Compensation Study for the Fire Department.
So we conducted the police and the fire study consecutively at the same time, and the presentation has the same objectives, to inform you of the objectives of the study, to share the methodology that we used, which was the same for the police-fire with variants of different peers, and to share the findings, and to then see if there are any questions that we can answer. So the project objectives were the same as they were for the police department. We gathered the base pay as well as from your benefits consultant, the health benefits, retirement benefits, and paid time off benefits, to look at the base pay of the fire positions with regards to the 75th percentile of the market as well as the total comp calculations as well. The peers that we used were slightly different than for the fire, for the police department, excuse me. We used the City of Fort Lauderdale, the City of West Palm Beach, City of St. Petersburg, Tampa, Miramar, and again, we used the City of Fort Myers for informational purposes only. They weren't used in the market comparisons or the analysis. Our findings for the fire department, for the six positions in the fire department, were at the midpoint, the 75th percentile of the midpoint. You're close to the same position as the police, you're at 87% of the 75th percentile of the midpoint, and 86% at both the minimum and the maximum. We found that when you factor in the cost of benefits, the healthcare benefits and the retirement benefits, that the position was the same. This is a correction from the report that you had previously received. Mr. Mayor, you had asked about that. We found that one of the calculations had to be corrected, and your position went from about, at the midpoint, 7% higher to 87%, which is in line with the rest of the findings. And this is as a result of the urging of the union to go back and look at that calculation. We spent extensive time finding where that needed to be corrected, but we did find that. Again, we looked at health and retirement and the paid time off. In terms of your total health benefits, including medical, prescription, dental, and vision, your employer contributions are slightly behind the market at the 75th percentile. Retirement plan contributions slightly lead the market, and paid time off are behind at some points in the comparison and lead the market and others. So we'll take a look at those findings now. In terms of weighted total employer health contributions, we use the same weighting that we used, the same methodology that we used for the police department and your general study that we presented last year. In terms of the employee only, you're extremely competitive with, looks like, I wish I had brought my glasses, you're within two percentage points of the market at the 75th percentile for employee. In terms of additional resources, spouse, child, and family, Cape Coral lags behind the market at the 75th percentile in some cases significantly. In terms of retirement contributions, these are pretty close. The market 75th percentile is 28.15%, and the City of Cape Coral is 28.55%. So these two findings, the retirement contributions and the employee health benefit contributions, that's what kept, you know, between the market for retirement and for benefits. They're pretty close to what the city is offering. When compared to the city to the market 75th percentile, you're still pretty close there, whereas with the fire department, there was a little more discrepancy. That's why the total employment costs and the base pay are pretty similar. In terms of the paid time off, the comparison is there. You are lagging the market for the first five years. At 10, you slightly overtake the market, and you plateau at 15 years at 494 hours for the remainder of the career, whereas the rest of the market does continue on average to increase from 478 hours to 511 hours. And that's the data. That's the findings. Are there questions?
I'll open up for any discussion regarding the presentation. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, have any other staff members, first for citizens' input?
We're good.
We're good? Okay, I'll now open up citizens' input on this particular item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. For the record, Mark Murth, President of the Cape Coral Professional Firefighters. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak before you today. Really, when we reviewed the analysis, there were really four areas that we kind of felt either needed to correct corrections or at least some more clarification as to how they got to their particular number, one of which you heard President Goff speak on today, that is ERI's geographical differential factor. You know, I think he makes a lot of valid points. He did a lot more research into this particular topic, but our membership agrees. We don't believe when we're doing the base studies and trying to figure out if we want to be competitive at the 75th, that we should be really doing that. Do I think it's important in some areas? Perhaps is the information important to you guys? Absolutely. But I don't think when we're coming down to the wage analysis, it's most appropriate. And I'm going to give you an example of why we feel that way. So West Palm Beach firefighters, their starting salary is at $57,000 for step-one firefighter. Cape Coral is at $55,600. So right now, we're below West Palm when we look at from a competitive nature. When we add the geographical differential, what ends up happening is their starting pay drops to about 53. Now it looks like West Palm is paid lower than us. I'm going to tell you, to a potential candidate out there that's trying to get a job, they're not looking at some geographical differential going, oh, this must be $53,000. No, they're looking at 57 for West Palm and 55,600 for Cape Coral. That's what really matters to the employee that's coming out here. So I just, I want to bring that back to you guys. Again, is it maybe important for you guys to kind of get an evaluation based on market data and stuff like that? Certainly. But I will tell you when it comes down to the particular candidate, they're not looking at any geographical differential or cost of labor or anything like that. So that was one item we agree with them on. We'd like to see that pulled from the report and then just do the analysis and see where we are as far as the numbers. The second one that we wanted to discuss was actually fixed. I would like to thank James for that. You know, we've been going round and round a little bit. In the initial study, what we saw was, all of a sudden, the total compensation ended up getting closer to the 75th, but it wasn't making any sense. Wherever they found the little mistake or hiccup in the data, they were able to fix it, and I believe you all received an updated report today that shows the numbers that were provided. So if it didn't come to you, I'm sure it'll come to you here shortly. Number three, and probably one that's super important, if not the most important one to us, is making sure that we're analyzing the right jobs with the right jobs in other categories. And so we believe that our fire lieutenants more closely match the fire captains in these other departments. When Siegel did their 2015 study, and then again, their 2020 update, fire captains were included in those studies. When we received the report during this study, we noticed that fire captains weren't in that study. And so right away, we began to do the research and made the city aware that we feel like, hey, we need to make sure the captains are included in this because that's who we compare to more closely. And just to give you guys, you know, a little education on the fire service, so in all of these other fire departments, they have a suppression unit, call it a fire engine, call it a fire truck, and then they have an ambulance service in which their lieutenants ride on that ambulance, and they have transport services. The City of Cape Coral does not operate that way. Instead, we have a fire suppression unit, I'm a lieutenant on that unit, and then I have a rescue truck, a much smaller unit that goes out and operates. But comparatively speaking, the fire captain runs the station at all these other locations. That is effectively the same position that I do, is run the station. I just happen to have two guys out on a unit. Basically, we say, hey, whoever's the senior-most fireman out there, you're in charge. That's kind of the way we treat the current system because we don't have ambulances and we're not transporting. So as much as I've, you know, banged my head against the wall trying to convince the city that we should be matched with the captain, I've been unsuccessful to this point. With that said, here more recently, I just said, you know what? Let's take the data, let's put it into an AI software program, let's let it run. It's completely objective. It's not my opinion, it's not the city's opinion. What does AI say? That's what I provided to you guys today. It took a look at all the job descriptions. Strangely enough, it happened to match with captain more often than lieutenant, go figure, because that's precisely what it should do. That's, anybody will tell you that's in the fire service, that we are the same as the captains at these other locations. With that said, fire inspector is much more difficult. So all we did was, we took the fire inspector job descriptions, we ran them through the same program to get an analysis and say which one of those fire inspector certifications and job qualifications and descriptions and everything, what do they match up to with these other departments? So you'll see that in the report also, because that was another area we identified, that according to Siegel, when their report comes out, they're saying, hey, you're matched up with this fire inspector. And to them, they're getting information from these other locales, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure we're matching to the right job description, the right people. Last but not least, we personally would have liked to seen the paid time off and the holiday time broken out. Currently in the report, it is showing you both. We have shared with Siegel, we do not get time off for holidays. We have to work the holiday, so there is no paid time off. We don't believe those two should be calculated together. There are some departments that do provide time off for holidays. We do not on shift. We all have to work the holiday, and we receive compensation for that. We think a better look would be to separate and say, all right, how much PTO compared to these other departments, and then where is your holiday time? And I think you'll see the disparity there because when it comes to the time off, we're very competitive. When it comes over here to the holiday pay, not so much. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of the items that were asked about earlier. To Councilmember Carr's point, I agree. I think, you know, in the future, if there's a way to include some of these benefits so that we can get a better apples-to-apples comparison when it comes to retirement pension, things like that, some places offer, you know, more early time out, things like that, I think it's important to at least have the data in there to kind of see that. To the city manager's one statement about, you know, this is going to give us an entire total compensation, my only point I'd like to argue is, there is no incentive packages that are looked at in this particular study. When it comes to public safety, you'll often see numerous additional incentives to try to attract individuals for different teams, hazardous materials, could be rescue diver, paramedic, those types of things. Personally, I think if we're going to do an analysis, we ought to take a look at those things, too, to make sure that we're still competitive in those different markets. Certainly, we do it from a negotiation standpoint, but I think it would be better, again, if it was a more cooperative effort between the city and the unions, so we're not arguing over the particular numbers. Councilmember Steinkie, we know that we have three more agreements that are, we have two that are in current contract negotiations now, three other agreements, we already know the pay raises they're getting come 10-1-24, and then they close out in 2025. So those are, that's that answer for that. I think that's all. I'm ready for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up. Any questions for the fire union? Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you. Mark, different from police and the study that went on there in fire, it looks like that year 10 and year 15 are, we're above market, if you will, even though you're talking about, you play the holidays and don't play the holidays. However that works, it's going to be the same, no matter how you look at it. Was that by design? So as you lobbied for your contracts in the past, was there a focus on, if you will, really taking care of those 10- and 15-year veterans, or did that happen by happenstance?
So I will tell you that the language that is currently in the contract has been there for a very long time. At the end of the day, we max out at 15 years. You can't, no matter how many more years you work, you earn no more time off. There are several other departments that, you know, 20 years, 25 years, you know, you're going to continue to accumulate more time. For us, we have two large blocks, like 1 and 5. There's like no difference. In other words, from 1 to 5, you earn X amount of hours. From 5 to 10, you earn X. Then after 10 years, at 11, you earn a little more, 12, you earn a little more, 13, anymore. Whoever designed it originally, we've never really deviated from that. We might have adjusted how many hours we earn. If you might remember last contract, we took cuts years ago during the recession. We actually bounced back to what those pre-cuts were in our last negotiation. So we like have elevated the hours, but as far as like a particular design, why it's done that way, it's just always been for as long as I can remember.
Because what it looks, what it looks like to me just at first blush, is that that particular benefit, when you look at the total economic package, that particular benefit is designed more for retention than it is for attraction. And so, you know, in year one, we're 13 hours behind. In year five, we're 32 hours behind, but then at year 10, we're two hours ahead. And then at 15, we're 16 hours ahead, and at 20 years, we're at three hours behind. So it looks more like, hey, if you stay here long enough, you'll really get some, you know, good time off, PTO, however that plays out.
I would share again, I'm sorry. I do think you will see a difference if we were to separate holiday versus the leave time. You'll see a difference there when you look at it that way.
Okay. And what you're saying is the comparables. And what you're saying is the comparables, their holidays are separate from their PTO?
Yes, just like ours are. That's what's strange to us, is in our agreement, you have earned time off. The only thing we do different from these other, I'm talking generalities, the only thing we do differently is, we do not separate vacation and sick. All these other agreements do. You have vacation time, you have sick time. We just consolidate it into one bank. But your holiday time is completely separate. That is true for us, that is true for all these other agreements. I think James is shaking his head. No, I would, I'm pretty familiar with the contracts that we're comparing them to. The holiday pay benefit and time is different.
Just trying to see, since you brought it up, I was just trying to say, does that mean we're not comparing apples and apples, or we are comparing apples and apples? If the others do it the same way, then we're still comparing apples and apples.
I, what I can share with you is, I do believe what Siegel is trying to do is say, hey, here's how much vacation and sick leave is, and here is how much holiday pay perhaps, and trying to add those two together to create a look of overall paid time off.
Macro.
Yes.
What did the data for the two underneath is that, that's what he's saying, if you look at the micro of the two, you see a difference?
You get a different picture when you're looking at the two separately. Significantly different, to be honest with you. The holiday or the time off is competitive when you do separate, and I want to be, I'm sure the city attorney will caution you, since we're in negotiations, I want to be cautious. But when we're looking at that other benefit in the holiday, what we see is a significant difference as opposed to when we look at them grouped together like this in that particular study.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr?
Mark, just two questions. In our structure here, you talked about the captain and lieutenant discussion, are our driver engineers considered supervisory staff in our structure here in the Cape?
Not according, what I would share with you is, not according to, and I believe the chief, yeah, not according to the job description. Is it often left that they're in charge of that apparatus when it's out on the road, and a soft supervisory of the individual they're with? I would say yes. That is how our system works, is that the two of them are out there together. If something goes wrong, I'm pretty sure the chief's going to be looking at that engineer first, like, what the heck went wrong? Does that make sense? But job description wise, not.
Yeah, but they don't have any direct supervisory responsibility over subordinates.
Negative.
Okay. And the other question is, when you referenced the lieutenants and the comparables and the other agencies, you said that they are related mainly to medical response. Are they actually physically riding on a truck?
Yes. So the way it works in all the other departments, with the exception of St. Pete, all of those other departments, they, let's say they run an engine, fire engine, and then they have an ambulance. The lieutenant is on that ambulance. That's how they operate. The captain, who covers the station or whatever, is on that fire engine or fire truck. St. Pete is a unique one. It doesn't really match that model, but that's how the four out of the other five operate.
So just operationally, if the fire, if the rescue goes out with the lieutenant on it, the engine may stay in-house?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions for you. Appreciate you coming today and providing input. I only had one question. I don't see any other lights on for city manager. You know, it's a lot of data. First off, since there was an update, can you send us all the update to make sure we got the most accurate copy of the compensation study?
Absolutely.
And then secondly, you know, when you look at the 75th percentile, and you look at a variety of positions, it doesn't matter if it's the police or the fire, you see a difference on a percentage, what it's going to take to get that particular job classification to the 75th percentile. Is that kind of the methodology that you're, that you are looking at? And to give you an example, say for the fire departments, the battalion chiefs could be a bigger margin to get to the 75th percentile. They may be at 18%, where, say, a lieutenant may be at 3% or 6%. So there's a difference. So are you going to be looking at salary ranges?
I'm going to defer that answer to a shade meeting.
Okay. All right. All right. I don't have any other questions. Any other? All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and we appreciate you waiting around today. We know it's been a long afternoon, so thank everyone for coming. I will move on to item five, which is roundtable discussion. We don't have anything listed, any roundtable discussions for council? Mr. City Manager, you got anything else?
I do not. Thank you for the session today. You got through a lot of stuff.
Thank you. Time and place, a future meeting. We have a Cape Coral City Council budget workshop scheduled for Tuesday, August 6, beginning at 2:00 PM here in council chambers, and we have a regular meeting at Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, August 7, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting adjourned.